Good evening. The May third, two thousand and twenty-one Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anorrendo County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Here.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Schewitt, Legislative Council.
Present.
Ms. Folair, County Auditor.
Present.
Madam Chair, everyone is present.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, it is my turn to lead. Beginning with the invocation, I just ask that we all take a moment of silence to think of India and the COVID-nineteen crisis that they are having there on an unimaginable scale. But we have many families in this county who are impacted, who still have family there, who have relatives there. And we just take this time to think of them, to pray that the situation there gets alleviated, that they get the equipment and help that they need. And we hope that their losses are minimized, but also that if there's an opportunity that we can do anything for them here in Anorrendo County, that it would present itself. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I hope that was right because I've never choked on the Pledge of Allegiance before. How embarrassing. I'm very sorry, everyone. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked me to read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the County Council is due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written comments from the public to be submitted and considered by the council ahead of time, and allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Maryland Open Meetings Act. In addition, this technology satisfies the intent of the rules of procedure of the County Council that apply to meetings, and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the County Council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at four ten two 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 four four one three.
We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any comments this time.
Nor do we have any individuals signed up to speak during this portion of the meeting. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one.
The meeting was called to order by Chair Sarah Lacy at six PM. Chris Beatty, Lead Pastor, Hope Springs Church gave the invocation, and Mr. Volkey led the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom, beginning with a roll call of all present. The auditor's office was represented by the County Auditor, Michelle Folair.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
My pleasure, Madam Chair. I did want to point out, I am reading all of the titles of the budget bills again this evening as well to get them into the record officially. So we'll begin with Bill Number thirty-two twenty-one. An ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anorrendo County. Bill Number thirty-three twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, and waterways improvement districts. Bill Number thirty-four twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, Arrendel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill Number thirty-five twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, Arrendel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill Number thirty-six twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill Number thirty-seven twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill Number thirty-eight twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill Number thirty-nine twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill Number forty-two twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill Number forty-one twenty-one. An ordinance concerning tax levies, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill Number forty-two twenty-one. An ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, Arts Council of Anorrendo County Special Revenue Fund, Annapolis and Anorrendo County Conference and Visitors Bureau Special Revenue Fund. Bill Number forty-three twenty-one. An ordinance concerning public works, solid waste collection, solid waste service charge, solid waste landfill and facility delivery fees. Bill Number forty-four twenty-one. An ordinance concerning property tax and semi-annual payment service charge. Bill Number forty-five twenty-one. An ordinance concerning personnel, classified service exempt service. Bill Number forty-six twenty-one. An ordinance concerning personnel, positions in the classified service and the exempt service. Bill Number forty-seven twenty-one. An ordinance concerning zoning, veterinary clinics as a conditional use in industrial districts. Bill Number forty-eight twenty-one. An ordinance concerning zoning. Alcohol but alcoholic beverage uses as accessory to other uses. Bill Number forty-nine twenty-one. An ordinance concerning zoning, requirements for special exception uses, assisted living facilities. Resolution Number twenty-five twenty-one. Resolution approving the selection of SB and Company LLC, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Resolution Number twenty-six twenty-one. Resolution celebrating Older Americans Month in Anorrendo County.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. As Chair, I believe we can vote on resolutions numbers twenty-five twenty-one and twenty-six twenty-one under our rules later this evening. However, if anyone feels a motion is necessary, now would be the time to make it. Okay, I'll take that as agreement. We will vote on resolutions twenty-five twenty-one and twenty-six twenty-one later this evening. Madam Secretary, let's start the big show. Please read the title of Bill Number eleven twenty-one as amended.
I'm sorry, one moment, Madam Chair. Bill Number eleven twenty-one. An ordinance concerning planning and zoning, general development plan, Plan two thousand and forty.
Mr. Barron. Once again, I call on you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the council. Pete Barron with the administration. First, thank you to the members of this council. We're excited for tonight's vote on Plan two thousand and forty, Bill eleven dash twenty-one, the county's general development plan. I would be remiss if I didn't also thank the folks on this screen from the administration, Mr. Johnston and Ms. Rhodes from our Office of Planning and Zoning, our Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Carrier, Mr. Stringer, Ms. Pompa, Mr. Wildonger, Mr. Hughes, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Phipps from our Wreckin Parks Agency, Ms. Matthews from Health, Mr. Herb from Transportation, Ms. Azur McIntosh, and from the Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klosmeyer and Ms. Kelly Kenny, and I believe Mr. Swain is joining us for this bill as well. A tremendous amount of time and work went into not only the development of the general development plan, but these last few months as this council has. So I'm sure you would join me in thanking the hours and hours of work that folks put in to make this a better plan. There is one technical amendment we'll be seeing tonight, and that just adds, corrects some typos and whatnot in the document. As you know, Anorrendo County residents came together and created a vision for the future of our county. And you know what? It turns out that regardless of our political affiliations, we agree on a lot. We want to preserve our natural resources, improve our infrastructure, preserve and enhance existing and establish neighborhoods and redevelopment and redevelop to improve the lives of our residents in ways that offer opportunity for all. We also want a government that is accountable to its residents, establishes performance metrics, and is transparent about progress. Plan two thousand and forty shows us how to get there. It identifies goals, policies, strategies with responsible departments, timeframes, and performance measures for each. It establishes nine community-led regional plans that must take place before any comprehensive rezoning is allowed. This is a large document, and it demanded a thorough review by this body, a task that I think we can all agree the past several meetings clearly accomplished. Now, I'm going to turn it over to our DCAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. After Ms. Rhodes speaks, she will turn it over to our Planning and Zoning Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler at OPZ for some brief remarks. But I do want to express not only my personal thank you, but from the county exec as well for all the hard work, the seven members of this council, and the staff of not only the administration, but council staff put in to make this a great document. So, Ms. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Good evening, everyone. Again, the administration would like to thank each and every one of you for the hard work that went into this plan. Planning is first, second, and last about people. So your contribution to this plan will assist in guiding policy decisions to help people to collectively define a brighter future for their community. The goals and strategies in Plan two thousand and forty will enable the appropriate departments to craft regulations that will be strengthened and diligently enforced with increased investment in habitat protection and restoration. Land development regulations will promote redevelopment of underutilized properties and limit development of forests and farms. It will provide more housing options in more areas of the county, and investments will be made in underserved neighborhoods to ensure all residents have access to opportunity. This plan provides a robust community engagement and allows a diverse group of individuals the opportunity to serve on implementation committees and to grade us on how we are doing. Planning for roads and parks, agricultural and woodland preservation, land use, transportation improvements, creating resilient communities by updating stormwater management regulations, and expanding shoreline protections, reducing energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions to lower our carbon footprint, and providing housing affordability are just a few of many strategies included in this plan. Ultimately, what really matters is how to transform these strategies into tools that will serve the community and the people who live there to make Anorrendo County the best place for all. The administration is looking forward to working with the council on implementation of Plan two thousand and forty to shape a future that is green, smart, and equitable. Great job, council members. And I'll hand it over to Steve Kai Ziegler.
Thank you, Lori. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. I too want to echo Mr. Barron and Ms. Rhodes. Thanks to the County Council. You know, this has required a tremendous amount of time and effort on your part in bringing Plan twenty forward. And my comments are going to be very brief. It's basically what can you expect to see next over the next few months? Assuming GDP adoption tonight, immediately following, Planning and Zoning staff along with the Office of Law will begin reconciling the County Council adopted amendments into Plan two thousand and forty. That process needs to be completed within forty-five days, which is the effective date of the bill for the GDP. We will also prepare and make available the Stakeholder Advisory Group's application and process on layout, how that will work. That will occur by the end of May. We are anticipating a forty-five to sixty-day application phase for Stakeholder Advisory Group interest in joining. And immediately follow that up with recommendations on membership to the administration and the county executive. We will also initiate pre-planning, which includes combining, compiling existing data collection analysis for each of the three region plans that we will start. We will prepare a Stakeholder Advisory Group educational package for the first three stakeholder advisory groups. And we're anticipating the Stakeholder Advisory Group kickoff meetings in late September, early October. So we have a number of key things that we'll be working on throughout the summer into the early fall to stay on track with our schedule. So with that, I'd also like to give Christina Pompa and then Cindy Carrier just a moment to share a couple of their thoughts.
Good evening, Chair Lacy and members of the council. Christina Pompa, Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So on behalf of the staff of the Office of Planning and Zoning, I'd like to thank the council members for their extensive work on the general development plan, especially the time they've spent over the last three months during the legislative process. Most council members met with OPZ staff multiple times to discuss their questions and proposed amendments. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to engage with the council chair, council members, and their staff as they work through the Plan two thousand and forty narrative and planned land use map. Some of the amendments were quite large, such as amendments related to implementation, the region plans, and the Stakeholder Advisory Committees. I think these amendments have enhanced the Plan two thousand and forty, and OPZ staff truly appreciates being able to work collaboratively on these significant amendments. And with that, I will turn it over to Cindy Carrier.
Thank you, Ms. Pompa. Good evening, Chair Lacy and members of the council. Cindy Carrier, Planning Administrator for the Long Range Planning Section of Office of Planning, Zoning, and Project Manager for Plan two thousand and forty. So it's been nearly four years to the day since a previous council approved resolution eighteen seventeen requesting that planning and zoning began the update of a comprehensive plan for a general development plan. Plan two thousand and forty is the result of thousands of voices of county residents, and I would like to echo my thanks to all of those who participated in this process. I especially appreciate the many hours that were put in by the Long Range Planning Staff and a forty-member project team. I'd also like to thank the OPZ leadership and the administration for their support during this process, many of which came in in the middle of the process. So thank you for your time, collaboration, and your thoughtful decision-making. The staff and I look forward to continued participation and collaboration during implementation of two thousand and forty as well as several upcoming master plans, including the kickoff of three region plans. Thank you.
Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number eleven twenty-one as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did receive one submission through the website that was shared with the entire council. It's been added to the record, and it was posted to the website.
And we do not have anyone signed up to speak tonight on Bill Number eleven twenty-one as amended. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill Number eleven twenty-one as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number eleven twenty-one as amended.
Bill Number eleven twenty-one. An ordinance concerning planning and zoning, general development plan, Plan two thousand and forty.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Would this be the appropriate time to ask a clarifying question on the record one final time?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So there is still confusion in the community as we are approaching a vote here this evening on properties that didn't, for whatever reason, either ask for an amendment to the general development plan or are just starting the process of their business adventures, or business ventures, I should say. One in question, the Providence Center, is my understanding that they believe that their property with the facility that is on site is equipped for industrial use. This was brought to my attention after our last council meeting, includes a workshop, warehousing, and et cetera. And then there's a small restaurant in a residential area. So I just want to confirm for the record once more that there is going to be another opportunity during regional plans for these folks and anyone else in the county. I think there is still some confusion because we've kind of flipped the timeline.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's an important question. The short answer is yes, we can confirm. Maybe it might be more authoritative to have Office of Law speak to it just to make sure it's on the record if Mr. Swain or Ms. Blair Klosmeyer or Ms. Kenny wants to say anything.
I can jump in. Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. That's correct. The general development plan is a plan. There's nothing being, there's no zoning or land, actual land use changes being implemented here. Impe-mented here is just a plan for the future. During regional plan, these things can be discussed, and then ultimately there'll be comprehensive rezoning where those actual uses and zoning will be modified, or can be modified.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I just want to confirm a couple of things to make sure that I'm understanding the plan correctly. On page thirty-four of volume one of the GDP, it looks like the growth rate for the county has been, I believe, over the last decade, point seven percent. Is that correct? And is planning and zoning using that same growth rate for the next twenty years to get the figures that they have on page thirty of volume one, where they indicate that the county will grow by fifty thousand people and an additional twenty-nine thousand households by two thousand and forty?
Mr. Barron.
Mr. Kai Ziegler, somebody at OPZ, want to take that?
So Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, I'll start, but I would ask Christina Pompa and Cindy Carrier to weigh in because a forecast is at best a forecast. You are correct that Councilman Volkey, that that is the average we've been averaging over the last ten years. We are not expecting that rate of growth to change dramatically. It is very difficult to forecast out twenty, thirty years with a degree of accuracy over what may occur in the market. So with that, what I would ask probably is Cindy Carrier to just talk a little bit about the methodology we use to come up with those figures.
I don't think I can speak to the actual methodology at this time. We this was in collaboration with our research in GIS section. If any of my senior planners want to jump in, please do. But I will say that we do have an opportunity to reassess that with new census data coming out, and with each of the region plans, we will do that.
Anyone else? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So without understanding, one of the things that stood out to me, it's really two things. On page forty-two of volume one of the GDP, there is a listing of the different land use designations that Planning and Zoning has used in this plan, and then the acreage associated with each of those land use designations. On page one sixteen of volume two, there is a table that lays out the expected zoning category that is associated with those land use designations and what would be anticipated in terms of the comprehensive rezoning process, which would obviously follow the region plans. Given that the region plan should maintain some consistency with the GDP, and the comprehensive rezoning after that should remain some consistent, should remain consistent with both the region plans and the underlying GDP, how useful would it be from a planning perspective to look at the zoning, or excuse me, the land use designations that you have in page forty-two of the, of volume one, and compare them to page one sixteen in volume two to understand where the county is going in terms of potential zoning for the future?
Chair Lacy, I can answer that question if you'd like.
Go ahead, please.
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think one of the things that we've learned through this GDP process is that even though we might be able to look at what a potential correlation would be between land use and future zoning, that in reality, the staff does not have control over zoning. The approving body for all zoning decisions at a comprehensive level is the County Council, and for piecemeal rezonings, it's the Administrative Hearing Officer. And therefore, staff did not feel that that was something that was important because it's really an extrapolation or, or a projection that is almost, in our opinion, meaningless. And that's the reason we did not do that. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Appreciate that from OPZ. So I did perform the analysis because I didn't find it meaningless. I thought it would actually be helpful to know how many acres of land are zoned a particular way today and based on this plan, and then the proposed or anticipated zoning that would follow a land use designation, what that would look like in terms of acreage in the county. And in doing that analysis, which I've shared with OPZ, and they've had an opportunity to see it, what I can see is that it appears under this plan that we are decreasing the amount of acres that are rural zoned, the amount of acres that are low-density residential, low-medium-density residential. And this is by thousands, if not tens of thousands of acres. And really, we're only increasing zoning or land use, I should say, in the medium-density residential and in the mixed-use areas. So the concern that I have about this plan, and what I'm still not able to figure out from the plan, is where these new twenty-nine thousand units are going to go in this county. Because if you're zoning less land residential, but you're anticipating that there are likely to be the exact same growth rates that we've seen for the past ten years, which frankly have made a lot of our constituents upset, I'm not clear on where that's going to go in the county. So if anybody can speak to that from planning and zoning, I'd appreciate it because it would help me understand where the plan is going.
Ms. Pompa.
Councilman Volkey, Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think that we've tried to stress that planning is a cyclical process, that we're right now starting with a general development plan, and then we will move into region planning efforts, which will also, as Cindy Carrier said previously, reevaluate population and population projections, reevaluate the land use map, and then look at comprehensive rezoning for, for the different regions. So there's always an opportunity to So there's always an opportunity to address whether or not there are shortages. And there's always, always a decision to be made about whether we're going to accommodate the growth that we think is coming to the county. So it is, it is cyclical, it's fluid, and it can change. Now, there were a lot of decisions made with land use by the council as, as identified through all the amendments that happened. Some of them reverted land use to lower-intensity land use, some intensified it. Mr. Kai Ziegler referenced that over the next forty-five days, we, assuming the council adopts the plan tonight, will be rectifying the land use map and, and reevaluating. So I don't think that tonight and this plan is the endpoint. There are still plenty of opportunities. We do see that a significant amount of growth will happen in the mixed-use zoning districts. We do anticipate that a lot of growth will be handled through redevelopment as the county becomes more built out. So as planners, I, this is not something I think that we are as worried about because we understand that there are processes ahead of us for adjustment. The other thing I want to say is some of the areas where you referenced thousands of acres being changed to lower-intensity land use designations. A lot of that was in the consistency changes, where the land use has already been established on the ground. So we were simply bringing the land use in the planned land use map into conformance with the land use that exists, that is built out, which we felt wasn't an important planning exercise to do, to try and bring what's on the ground, to be consistent with the planned land use map, and then ultimately through the region plans and the comprehensive zoning to bring that and make that consistent. But again, the council has the approval authority for this. Staff would make recommendations. So I want to remind you of that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Kai Ziegler.
Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, if I could add to Ms. Pampa's comments. Councilman Volkey, the numbers you're referring to are a future forecast that is built on a number of factors that exist today. And it goes out twenty years and forecasts or predicts an amount of residential, industrial, commercial growth. It's good for, as a general guide, on what may happen. But we're talking twenty years out, and this GDP, and no GDP comprehensive plan necessarily provides land use and zoning to accommodate all future predicted or forecast growth. That is not, in the, in the planning world, a best practice. Especially when, you know, the jurisdiction is attempting to create a long-term planning process that is cyclical, meaning in the next twenty years, we will have a GDP hopefully that's adopted tonight. We will complete nine region plans, a series of functional master plans. Within that twenty years, we will also come back to this GDP, and we will update that GDP. There'll be, and, and then we will get through some number of updating the nine region plans, all within that twenty-year time period. Each one of those, I'm going to say, planning exercises, has the ability to change land use and zoning. So what, what you're seeing in this plan is what I would call a best practice, and what we are trying to establish, and institutionalizes a way of doing planning into the future that allows a series of refinements that allows us to accommodate the amount of growth that this county decides it wants to accommodate.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. I appreciate those responses from Office of Planning and Zoning. I guess what I'm trying to understand so that I can answer constituents who ask this is, you know, one of the things I think all of us heard loud and clear in the last election was people felt like there had been too much growth, too much development, and there wasn't a solid plan about where that was going to happen. I'd like to be able to tell people, this is where the growth is going to happen, or these are the areas where the county is sort of targeting that we're going to see growth. And I'm not clear on where exactly those are from this plan, considering that we're seeing less acreage allocated to any kind of residential use, except for the medium densities of the R-ten or the mixed-use, which could have a component, doesn't have to, but could have a component of residential to it. So really, I guess I'm trying to understand where in the county the plan is expecting that the growth will happen. That's my first question. I have another, but I'll, I'll wait to see if there's a response to that.
Pete Barron. I was gonna ask Ms. Rhodes to, to speak on that a little bit first, so.
Ms. Rhodes. Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. As you know, Councilman Volkey, development is driven by the market. So ultimately, they are going to decide whether or not they want to develop property that is zoned for a particular use. So that's, that's ultimately where, where it lands. So, I mean, other than what Steve and Christina has provided, that will determine where growth will go, the zoning of the property, the code that allows the use in the market that wants to develop on that property.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Rhodes, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I agree, it is the market. I also think that we would be naive if we thought that the things that we're doing in terms of land designation and then subsequently comprehensive rezoning don't significantly drive where development happens because what we allow on land to happen through this council and, and through this administration dictates in large measure how people respond then to that, the development community. But that said, I just want to clarify one point. So we have talked a lot about the regional plans and about comprehensive rezoning, which follows that. Is there any likelihood that this council will see any of the region plans based on the timelines that we've talked about? I've heard it's going to be anywhere from two years, so twenty-four months to thirty-six months, before we expect to see the first batch of region plans in front of the council. We are in May of two thousand twenty-one, so is there an expectation that we, at the earliest, would see these by May of twenty-three, when there's a new council situated? Is that kind of the thought process that we won't have any, any additional crack at the region plans or anything like that?
So Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, no. The goal is to move all three of the, of the region plans to this council in a time period that you can take action on. We consider the, if you want to say, the adoption of the GDP and the start of the application process for the stakeholder advisory groups to be the beginning of the region planning process. And we are looking at, you know, an eighteen to thirty-six months time period for each. It depends. It's very difficult to give the council or anyone an exact date or how long something will take when the public is materially involved. But our goal is to get the first three region plans to you before there's an election.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Kai Ziegler, can I just follow up on that? Because it's been a big, obviously, I've talked with you a lot personally about kind of the delay in this and the delay in the regional plans and how we really need to get those going. If I think I heard you correctly, a few minutes ago, you mentioned that this GDP, you have to get the amendments incorporated within forty-five days, and then it will be another sixty-day period for application. So that right there is three and a half months from today. Are, if, if that's the case, then we're, am I correct in understanding that the first three regions won't be starting until you know, September timeframe? And then really, you would only have a year to complete to get before this council?
Sure. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, we are considering the start date for those three region plans to be, for example, tomorrow. So I think you added things together. What we needed, what we need to do is we need forty-five days to reconcile all of the amendments that the council has adopted into the GDP document. On a parallel path, we're anticipating, having completed and making it available for the public to consider applying, the application to join a stakeholder advisory group, and we want to have that out by the end of this month. So they're recurring at the same time, not sequentially.
Sorry.
The, the issue's going to be, we're thinking in terms of a forty-five day to sixty-day time period to allow citizens to consider applying to be a member of the SAGs. One of the, the factors in this county, we found, is that interested parties typically don't decide to participate in the process until the very end of the process. And in order to best ensure transparency and the, the type of diversity that we all want in these stakeholder advisory groups, we're thinking it may be an extensive process for us to, we may have to go out and try and identify certain interests to participate in the SAGs to ensure that each of the three region plans and their stakeholder advisory groups meet the criteria that the council has decided is important. So, so we're considering the start of the region planning process immediately following the adoption of the GDP. We have every interest in, in, in working on and moving these first three region plans to this council in particular, because you are the council has, who has worked on the GDP. That's really important. You're the experts.
Madam Chair, may I follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Jessica Hare, District Seven. So Mr. Kai Ziegler, I, I do, I still just want to make sure I have the timeframe correct for the actual working time that the stakeholder advisory group will have on an individual region, even if we open up the applications by the end of this month, and you leave them open for sixty days. That's June and July. So really, August timeframe is the earliest that group is going to start working, and that's assuming every, everyone is appointed and whatnot by that point in time. So really, you're looking at twelve months, maybe thirteen at the outset, for that group to come together and put together the entire regional plan for any particular region, if you intend to have it back before this council. Is that fair?
That will be our goal. We intend to move these three region plans, get them to this council, so you can take action. That's the intent.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Kai Ziegler, thank you for that clarification. So with that, let's assume the very best-case scenario, the first three regions are back in front of this council in eighteen months. That'll put us into November of two thousand twenty-two, which is basically when all of us are up for election again, and probably less than a month before our terms expire in December. With that, do you anticipate that this council will have any opportunity to review comprehensive rezoning as a result of those regional plans? Because as Ms. Blair Klausmeyer noted, the GDP is really not impactful in terms of what actually happens. And as we know, the regional plans are simply a clarification of the GDP at a smaller level. So really, the rubber meets the road at comprehensive rezoning. So I guess my question would be, do we anticipate that this council will have any opportunity to do comprehensive rezoning for any of the regions prior to our terms expiring in the first week, I think, of December twenty-two?
So Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Officer, that is exactly our goal. What we consider is the the region planning process is a planning process that also includes comprehensive rezoning. Now, the Office of Law will tell you that you will probably need two bills, but the second bill that involves comprehensive rezoning can follow five minutes after the first bill, which is the region plan. But that is our objective. So I, what, what I will do is, you know, assuming we have a positive vote on the general development plan, in the next few weeks, we will put together our best estimate of a schedule for the first three region plans. But the answer is, and I know I keep saying it, is yes, you will be the deciders of the, the goal is for this, this council to be the deciders of the first three region plans, and for the comprehensive rezoning component to come in front of you. It'll, it'll be a hard push, but they are always a hard push. We, we have the benefit, I think, though, of getting the application process out as soon as we can, recognizing where we're at with the GDP, that we will have prepared the educational package that can be sent to members who are going to be on the region plans. And we'll be in a very good position when we get to the kickoff meetings to accelerate the three region plans to the extent it's possible to do so. Can I absolutely guarantee it? I can't, but no one could.
Okay, at this time, the administration has a final technical amendment to offer to the bill. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one twenty-nine.
Amendment number one twenty-nine. This technical amendment corrects typographical errors and other references in Plan Twenty Forty.
Mr. Barron.
Please move the amendment. Pete Barron with the Administration, please move the amendment. It is just technical and corrective.
Is our motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
And a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Is there any discussion? No further typos to address? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one twenty-nine.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one hundred and twenty-nine is adopted.
Okay, so since amendment number one hundred and twenty-nine was a technical amendment, we can move forward to vote on bill number eleven twenty-one as amended. Is there any further discussion at this time? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just wanted to make sure my mute was off. So I think by the numerous amendments that were mentioned just now, that it shows that this council really worked hard to amend Plan Twenty Forty to include some really important things. I think back to the Small Business Land Use Edition, some expanded environmental definitions, land use changes that we each individually worked on, and the formation of the stakeholder advisory groups. For the past few weeks since our last meeting, I've gone back and forth on one of the last amendments that passed. I didn't support it, but I'm still struggling with what it does. And in my opinion, it sets the stage for land use in this, this process to be backwards, in my opinion, in perpetuity. To me, the GDP is the guiding document for regional plans, and in my opinion, it guides us to it, but not through it. At least that's the way, not the way that it's supposed to. So it's a plan that's going to regularly and at least three times be amended for years to come, and this council may or may not be part of those amendments to the plan that's before us. So I'm struggling to see it as the guiding document that it should be. I see regional plans getting to a point where they look back at this guiding document, and the guiding document says that regional plans are supposed to figure out answers to questions. So we're constantly stuck in this this area of, this gray area, where we can't answer questions because it's not guiding the way that it should. So that's where I am this evening, and just wanted to share that.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. I, I want to start actually with just some thank yous to a number of people. Obviously, Planning and Zoning has spent a lot of time on this document, Ms. Carrier and Ms. Pampa, for the number of times you have met with me and all of the hours of effort you have put into answering my questions. I can't tell you how grateful I am. Thank you so much for all of that. You know, the PAB, the CAC, all of them, everyone has put in a lot of time. To my fellow colleagues, we all have put in a lot of time to evaluating this plan, and you know, I think back, I think this was a topic of conversation that came up frequently during the campaign. You know, what is the GDP going to look like? What is the vision we have for the future? What kind of creative solutions are we going to offer to these unique issues that come before our county? And you know, and what can we pull from other areas who have done, you know, who have, who have successfully dealt with these types of issues before? There are certainly some very good things in this plan. I'm very grateful that the bike path amendment passed, and we're going to look closer at brownfields, sustainable agriculture. There are a lot of good things that I like about this plan. There are a couple of fatal flaws that I see with the plan. The first is a transparency piece. We talked a lot about this with the, with the consistency changes. I'm very grateful to the administration and colleagues for, for supporting the amendment on the consistency changes. But of course, they, they were not part of the GDP for the PAB to review and the CAC. People didn't have access to that information. That's, that's a big concern for me. I am very happy to see that they're going to be in the regional plans. But that's, that's a piece for me that I have, that I've sort of struggled with. The second, and, and I share Councilwoman Fiedler's concerns about the regional plans and the order of the regional plans. So much of this GDP procrastinates, for lack of a better term, and, and it just, it says, let's look forward at the next plan. We'll, we'll discuss this in the regional plans. We saw this a little bit with the Parks Amendment, too, that I really struggled with on, on kind of on, on kind of lumping everything into one rather than considering what land use might be appropriate in, in which, which area. If this is going to be the guiding document, I think it's important that we really provide that guidance. And, and in part, the order is the problem. This is a bit more top-down approach as opposed to rooted in the community, and I struggle with that. If I think, if I think about District Seven, uh, specifically, let's look at Deal Park as an example. That came out of the last small area plan, the idea for that park. And, and we are still looking back at that small area plan for the vision for, for that area, and I think that that's so important. It is almost impossible, I think, to plan a vision for the whole county when you don't have the regional plans go first. I think it is critical that the community gets that say. And so, for me, that, that's a real problem. The, the last one and, and that I've struggled with is sort of this overarching idea that we didn't look to other states really, or, or outside of Maryland for thoughts on creative solutions or flexibility, however you want to call it, in dealing with, um, areas in the county that are already stressed so much. I, I can tell you from conversations with, um, community members, you know, many people in, in parts of District Seven feel like this is a bit of a status quo for their area, that it doesn't, it doesn't help change. What they feel like has already been overdeveloped, and it doesn't address that issue. And, and for them, you know, along the Route Three corridor and things like that, that's been a, that's been a big problem. You know, we all did a lot with the amendments and making improvements in that, in that respect. But for those constituents, the plan does, it feels like more of the same. So, while I certainly appreciate the good in the plan, I'm a little concerned because I, I don't think that it's the best job the county could do at this time. I think there's more that we could have done. I definitely look forward to additional review of the regional plans. I am concerned that I, I, given how long this plan took, I really struggle with the concept that we are going to see a regional plan, um, next fall. I sincerely hope I'm wrong. I really hope that, that that's not the case, but I do struggle with that. I have been pushing for over a year now to get the regional plan order set in advance on its own as a standalone type of, uh, piece of legislation that could have been incorporated into the GDP so that we could open an application process while we were evaluating the GDP and get those region plans moving sooner to give, uh, the general population more time. And unfortunately, that was not, uh, a recommendation that was ever, you know, really taken, I think, seriously. So, um, for me, that's, that's where I stand. I, I, I do, I'm looking forward to the regional plans. I think that is the most important piece. I appreciate everyone's effort, um, but those are the struggles that I have with the plan.
Mr. Pruski?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Pruski, District Four. I again want to reiterate all of the staff, uh, time, my colleagues, and, and certainly the, uh, administrative staff for our council. A lot of amendments coming through, and they certainly, uh, battled through, so I, I just want to take a moment to thank them. You know, it's interesting, I, uh, senior member on this council, I did not serve, uh, when we had a GDP or comp rezoning, so it's been a while. But I can recall my colleagues sharing the same thoughts that were just shared about, you know, not having a say. Well, that's why we also have elections, and we also have the ability to, to move forward. So, I think what was stated earlier is this is a plan, right? This is an evolving plan, and each of us has to own it. We're taking a vote on it, we put amendments in. So, the administration brought something forward. Certainly, we had discussions, but we all are part of this. It's going to be a living document. And, uh, again, uh, one of the things that was a little, uh, disturbing to me, but this is no, by no means the administration's fault, is the census being done. I'm trying to get facts about how many people live in Anarundel County. How many of that, that has nothing to do with this administration. And, and certainly, uh, the state is looking at now for redistricting, federal funding for schools. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that I'm sure the planning office would love to have with data to make those projections. So, again, I, I think, given the situation with COVID and pandemic, everything going on, um, I think it's the best plan we put forward, but we also have to own it in ourselves, and we have to do the work and take ownership because the council does have the final say. So, I certainly recognize and appreciate everyone's, uh, concerns. But as we go forward, um, what we can do is, is obviously, as the administration brings forward plans in these committees, is move quickly, quickly with them. Make sure we get the facts out, get everything in, and make sure that we are, uh, responsible for making sure those plans get on time and, and, uh, trying to do everything that's there. But again, I want to thank everybody. This is a large bill, large process, and we're going to get there, and, uh, appreciate everybody for the work that they done. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, I, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank you to all of the staff, our council staff, the planning and zoning staff, the administration staff, everybody who's worked on this document, the CAC members, including those who have reached out to us after the CAC concluded to share with us some of their concerns about this document and where they think it may have fallen short, um, through that process. I appreciate Planning and Zoning indulging me in responding to many emails with questions about this plan. I do have, again, I, I think Councilwoman Harris said it well when she said there are a series of fatal flaws in this bill. And to me, one of the most fatal is what I call a, a sort of fundamental assumption that I think underlies the plan, which is problematic. This plan assumes a growth rate exactly the same as we've seen for the last ten years. All of us were elected in two thousand eighteen largely on a concern from my constituents. I know I heard this. I know the county executive has said he heard it. I think many of us heard this loud and clear. There's been too much development, there's been too little planning about where that development goes, and there has been too much negative impact on the communities as a result of that development. And yet, this plan does nothing to address that. In fact, this plan perpetuates the same growth rate at point seven percent per year. That's laid out on page thirty-four of Volume One, for anybody who wants to fact check that. That means that we're going to see probably at least another fifty thousand people move into this county in the next twenty years, and we'll likely need another twenty-nine thousand houses. The question is, where are they going to go? Looking at the current land zoning, there is not a lot of land for those houses to go. And based on the projections, and I laid it out in my questions, but I'll highlight it again. If you look at Volume One, page forty-two, you can see the number of acres by land use designation in this plan. When you look at Volume Two, page one sixteen, it shows you the suggested zoning type for each of those land use classifications. When you take those two pieces of information, and then you couple them with some information that was provided from Office of Planning and Zoning about our current acreage and how it is zoned in this county, it's relatively easy to see that we are not actually increasing in any way the ability to have land that can accommodate this additional growth. So, what that tells me is one of two things. Either we're pretending that the growth isn't really going to happen when we've got three of the biggest economic drivers in this state with, which are BWI, Fort Meade, and also, uh, the casino. I mean, they're just driving so much economic activity in our county. So, we're either going to pretend that that growth isn't happening, or we're going to pretend that somehow we already have enough existing land the way it's zoned that we can accommodate that growth in some form or fashion. I think both of those are fallacies, and I think the problem with this plan is that it fails to plan for that. It fails to actually look at those issues and say, here's where we think that we are going to need to put housing, or we're going to accommodate that. I, I'm fascinated by the idea that we don't get to pick where houses go. We zone the land, we say what the land use designation will be, we set all the rules for what the density can be and how high buildings can be and all those different things. And yet, somehow, we as the government agency, the administration and the council, step back and say, but we don't actually tell you where you can build. The reality is, we absolutely do. Everything that we do dictates where that building happens. So, the major concern that I have about this plan is that it does not plan anything. In fact, it's a series of statements, uh, it's hundreds of pages of statements about different things that people think are important when you're looking at what you should do, but it doesn't actually lay out a roadmap for anyone as to where we're going. That's, that's a major concern for me. And I think the problem with that is, I don't believe for a moment, I'll be, as Councilwoman Harris said, I will be just as stunned if this council gets the region plans for the first three regions prior to the next election. What this feels like to me in many ways is that we are basically trying to kick the can down the road and not touch any of these issues until after the next election so that none of us can own any responsibility. Because as Councilwoman, uh, excuse me, Councilman Pruski said, uh, we own this document. And so, it feels to me like we are owning very little. We're kicking the can down the road with the expectation that after we get through the next election, then the real hard decisions will be made about what's actually going to happen in this county and what the growth will look like. So, to me, that's a massive concern. It's a fundamental and fatal flaw because this is a planning document that does not plan. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvien?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm a little disappointed to hear some of my colleagues speaking so critically of the plan because it's our work. And I think, you know, collectively, we've all been very responsive to each other in terms of, um, making changes that we thought would be, um, wise towards, um, improving this plan. I also want to commend the administration for, um, simply getting the process going to comply with state law. My understanding is that, um, we're a little behind the eight ball here, and, um, not really any fault of the administration. I'm not going to point fingers, but to get moving, to make sure that we are indeed, um, complying with state law in terms of completing this plan. With respect to the consistency changes, I, I feel like, um, you know, those were very, you know, very clearly mapped out. You know, some of them, you know, I, I printed out every single one in my district. I looked at every single one and said, okay, does this match? You know, do I, I know what's at the address? I know it's on that plot of land. Does what the consistency change suggest, or what does it offer? Does it match what I know is actually on the land? And, um, in almost every case, the answer was yes, or it was sandwiched in between two things that, um, you know, was the suggested, um, this is suggested change. So, I, I'm not really understanding the, the criticism there. With respect to the rate of development, this is something that we as a council were charged to take on, and the county executive was to charge to, to address. You know, we're, we're here to, um, offer solutions and find solutions and not simply point out problems. And I would like to commend, um, the Office of Planning and Zoning for finding opportunities to, um, increase the opportunities for, for new housing, um, throughout the plan. I think some of my colleagues also, um, did that. I specifically commend Councilwoman Lacy and Councilwoman Pickard for finding opportunities in their districts to allow for more housing in places that, you know, because of their intimate knowledge of the, of their district, they were able to, um, say, hey, this is a spot where it would make more sense. And with respect to saying, um, you know, where are these things going to, you know, where is this density going to occur? I think that's exactly what the land use tells us. You know, obviously, land use is not zoning, and that's one of the, uh, big lessons that I learned early on in this process, but they do relate to each other. And so, um, you know, to say that, uh, we don't have an idea of where these density, you know, where this density is going to occur, I absolutely disagree. You know, we have areas of the county marked as transit-oriented development. Well, that is going to be area, those are going to be areas with increased density. We have a lot of rural South County, which is, you know, um, you know, basically given land use with very low density. So, I don't really think there's any question. These were our problems to solve, these were our problems to find solutions to. And, um, it's just a little disappointing to hear, you know, um, I, I think all of, all of us have been very amenable to work. I, I've actually really been very positive about working with my colleagues on the amendments that they've offered because I think, um, they were genuinely trying to offer solutions. But, you know, I feel like, uh, to say that solutions aren't there, you know, I don't know who we're pointing at fingers saying they didn't do their job. Well, this was our job. So, I, I'm proud of the work that we did, and I, I think we did a good job, and I am proud of the work that my colleagues did, in, including you, Councilman Volkey. I think, um, you know, some of the, uh, the amendment that, you know, the suggested, uh, amendment that you made for part of your district where, you know, you saw an opportunity, I think that was fantastic. So, I think, you know, we were elected to be problem solvers. And so, um, I, I feel like, you know, I, I tried to, uh, make sure problems were solved for my district, and I'm proud of my colleagues, um, who also did the same. So, I, I, I'm very proud of this work. Is it perfect? No. But we also have opportunities to bring, um, more engagement down the road. I think there's actually been enormous amount of engagement. In fact, I remember going to enormous sessions, um, about, uh, land use very, very quickly after I was elected. You know, I remember sitting in the auditorium of Southern High School, I believe it was Southern High School, my apologies, if it sounds river. I think it was Southern High School, but, um, very early on and hearing, um, you know, dozens and dozens of people talk about what they were hoping for in this plan. So, yes, we haven't had the regional plans, but we had lots of input from all the regions. And so, to, um, you know, sort of dismiss that or say that that hasn't taken place, I think is, is not entirely genuine. Yes, we don't have the regional plans, but we've had all sorts of input, you know, in all the different facets of this. So, um, I'm proud of this plan, I'm proud of the Office of Planning and Zoning. I'm very grateful for my colleagues' work. I'm grateful for the attorneys who, you know, made sure we stayed on track. There's too many people, they've already been thanked, so I'm just going to say thank you to all of the people that have been thanked. You know, we, we did this, this was an enormous team effort. Um, I thank all the citizens that were engaged and involved, and I'm very proud of this document. I'm very proudly going to vote yes for it tonight.
Ms. Pickard?
Allison Pickard, District Two. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to take a minute to thank, um, the folks in Planning and Zoning, uh, who worked extensively with me to get to some important amendments that, uh, brought clarity, at least in my mind, to the plan. Um, I, like, uh, as my, uh, colleague, Ms. Rodvien, stated, I'm also, um, I'm a bit perplexed that, um, of the comments of a few of my colleagues tonight. We worked very hard to get to each and everyone's, uh, unique challenges in their districts. And I worked, I feel, in good faith to bring about amendments that made this document stronger for each of our, each of our unique areas. But more importantly, this is a general development plan that does map out development policy areas, critical corridors, critical economic corridors, neighborhood preservation corridors, growth tiers. There's lots of information, but at the end of the day, it is just a plan. And the actual implementation of all the goals from the built environment to healthy economies and everything in between with our healthy communities and the natural environment fall to the council to implement in updating our code. It's just a guide. We've been told that, we know that, we've lived and breathed that. This is a plan. It's a roadmap, but the real work is in the implementation. And I'm ready, I am really ready to tackle that work collaboratively with both my colleagues. And it's not going to happen overnight. There are council members who serve two terms that may have done comprehensive rezoning but never touched a general development plan. And I feel like my count, the, my colleagues are thinking, you're going to do a general development plan, nine region plans, and comprehensively rezone everything in the next two years. We've known from the get-go that that's not part of the process. This is a lengthy, lengthy process. And it involves mainly, the hard work comes with the implementation. I've got some legislation being introduced tonight that gets at policies that I'm hoping we're passing tonight unanimously because they're important to all of us. So, I, I'm a little perplexed on, on some of the, the, the comments, but we've been here before where we've, uh, as a council, and I'll be disappointed if we find ourselves in a situation where amendments were made to benefit certain, certain districts and certain, uh, council members, and then they choose to make a negative vote. They get, they get to, they get to poke holes and still get the, the, um, the benefit of the amendments that we all, um, took time to craft and collectively pass. I'm a little disappointed with the comments. I feel my comments tonight were going to be really based on making sure as a council and as the administration and into the next, whoever, um, is utilizing this plan as a guide will strike the balance between each of those four policy goal areas, the natural environment, the built environment, healthy communities, and the healthy economy. And if we can work together to strike that balance, we will make Anarundel County, we will improve our communities if we work together to strike the balance. There's really good stuff in this document, but the hard work is ahead through the implementation via legislation that this legislative body will be tackling for years to come. I'm a yes. And, uh, thank you for all the hard work, and the fun is just getting started, and I, I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, I-
So when I spoke before, I did not take time to thank some folks. Ms. Carrier, Ms. Rhodes, Ms. Pampa, Mr. Kai Ziegler. You have taken the time to meet with me on numerous topics, and I have appreciated that so much. I think that each one of us took a ton of time to introduce amendments, to work with our colleagues, to get this bill and document in the best shape possible. But that doesn't mean that it becomes a rubber stamp. I promised the constituents of District Five that I would be transparent and open and communicative. But that did not mean that I would work with my colleagues in order to get a unanimous vote on a bill. I still have the ability to make my own decision in this moment, in this evening, on behalf of the constituents of District Five. And I will tell you that the fact that I'm still getting questions and concerns over regional plans and this document and the timing, I have been consistently asking questions on this timeline from the very beginning. And that's where I'm still stuck and I struggle. And I'm not comfortable at this point with the concerns that I'm still hearing from the constituents voting in favor of this document this evening. It doesn't mean that I'll work any less hard on the regional plans or any other piece of land use legislation that comes before us. It doesn't mean that I think that Office of Planning and Zoning didn't put time and effort into it. I just see the timing of regional plans and the land use document to be opposite of how I think we should be doing land use plans moving forward. And it's a difference of opinion, and some of my colleagues may not agree with it, and some folks in OPZ may not agree with it. But that's why I campaigned, and that's why I'm here, and I'll have to answer questions in the future. And I feel like I'm doing my due diligence this evening in the vote that I take. So I thank everyone for their efforts, their time and commitment, and where I stand will be reflected in my vote this evening. So thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Councilwoman Rodvian, yes, Southern High School. Also, on the consistency changes that you mentioned, my concern with the consistency changes is not that you and I couldn't go in eventually to a map finally and see where they were. It was the general public's access to that information or lack thereof. And so that's really my issue with the consistency changes, which I do hope is remedied in the regional plans and that everyone is able to have their input on that. In terms of Councilwoman Pickard, I agree with a lot of what she said. I think everyone worked in good faith to make amendments to the plan to improve it. So I don't think anyone here is suggesting anything else. But I do think ultimately we get to a point where there's a difference of opinion in terms of taking a top-down approach with the GDP coming first and the regional plans coming after versus the reverse. And, you know, there was a lot of delay on this plan, and I have struggled with the timeline and the delay and things like that. So I agree, I think there's a lot of great things in the plan that I look forward to working on and implementing later on. But I do think that there are some really problems in terms of how we are handling land use as a whole moving forward. So, I mean, I really do, I thank everyone for their hard work. I think we have done good work as a council together. And I look forward to doing more good work in the regional plans and hope to see the first three next fall.
Mr. Barron, unless you'd like to say anything now, then I will take a turn and make comments. I was just thinking about the Jessup Small Area Plan. It was approved in 2004. And so many of the things that they put in that small area plan never came to fruition. And now it will have been longer than the life of the Brudex cicada for them to see any improvement. And even with that, when I think of how much detail and effort was put into that plan, that's why it took so many years to do, how here we are seventeen years later, and we're debating things like, are we starting a cycle? Are we in a linear time mode where we can just sort of say, you know, pick whatever order you want to pick? Are we at the end, are we at the beginning? It's a very metaphysical question, you know, that doesn't really bear on planning for the future of Anarundel County. Because everything that has been before will inform what comes in the future, independent of whether we are the particular people representing the residents of this county. I think we would all do well to try to step back and be a little bit more objective about the planning process, the fact that human beings are messy. Human civilization is messy. Building cities is messy. It's not like what we can do on our, you know, playing SimCity or whatever you like to do on your favorite video game, or even, you know, when you play Risk and you arrange all your little pieces in a particular way. We don't have that degree of control, and our society is not set up to have that degree of control over what our ultimate land use and our ultimate build-out is. And, you know, it really, I don't think, helps us, it actually kind of obscures our ability to think ahead by continuing to reinforce our notions that relate to what things look like right now and whether or not we can accept changes for the future. I think this council has an obligation to be thinking about what people twenty years from now will want to have in the county and to think broadly about what the economic conditions might be like for those people, the housing conditions, educational conditions. You know, are we at that point, has there been a significant decrease in the birth rate? You know, have we built enough places for older people to be able to live independently in the county where they choose to, where they've invested all their lives? Those things are really important. And it's on us to make some, to do what I think are some of the most, make some of the most difficult decisions that we've been called upon to make, is to analyze those things and separate them from ourselves, separate them from what we know, our personal experience, or our friends, or, you know, what we knew growing up, and to say, the world is a really different place, but we can come together and coalesce on this set of values and protecting our environment and providing recreational opportunities to everyone that are accessible to everyone. We can all agree that everyone needs a place to live. We don't have to agree on what kind of place that is, but we can agree to work together and to continue to hear each other. And I think that's been probably the most satisfying aspect of this process, which has not been satisfying as a whole and has had its many frustrations and ups and downs, but has been, I think, for the fact that we are elected representatives who listened to our constituents and have brought what we thought were the best amendments that we could bring to the plan. We work together to do that. We should be able to celebrate that going forward. We're not celebrating that it's perfect. We're not celebrating that we like everything in the document. We're not even admitting that we like everything in the document. We are upholding the and celebrating the fact that our elected body is affirming the work done by our experts that our taxpayer dollars pay for in our departments, who tried to do the most comprehensive study. They should all have PhDs at this point in Anarundel County. And saying, great job. And yes, this is a foundation for what comes next. And we've also said all the caveats that what comes next can be very different from what we are saying here. And so let's move forward with hope that we're then able to look even more carefully at specific regions and areas and to say, you know, what we thought would work in the general development plan is really not what will actually work. So let's come up with a better solution. Let's keep this momentum going where the public is very involved. Because whatever momentum there was back in the small area plan of 2004 didn't seem to help Jessup one bit. They're just going to emerge like the cicadas. And I'm working to help make sure not just Jessup, but all of the communities in District One. And especially with all the transit-oriented development that uniquely affects my district above any other district in this county, to be able to say, we need to be forward-thinking. We need to have open minds. And we need to be able to come together in ways that are open-minded and support each other in doing that. And that means voting yes for a plan that overall accomplishes those goals and embodies those values. So I hope all seven of us will vote for the plan tonight.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we've had a lot of good discussion. I share your hope that everybody votes for this plan. We think it's a good plan, and there's a lot of work left ahead of us. Like Councilwoman Pickard, we're excited to get to work.
Is there any final discussion? Ms. Pickard.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I've got a long list of implementation legislation that I would like to work on. So I have to just prioritize which goal in the GDP I'm going to tackle first. So there is a lot of work to do, and I just want to say one more time, thank you. Like the Jessup Small Area Plan, the Glenn Burney Small Area Plan of 2004 has been sitting on a shelf for a long time, and I know my community is eager for their representative to get to work, and this is the first step. Thanks.
Okay, we have a lot of people on screen, so if I'm missing your hand or a flag or something, please just speak up so what you have to say can be said. Okay, I'm not hearing from anybody, and I'm not seeing any more flags. I'm looking as hard as I can. Last chance. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1121 as amended.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 1121 as amended is passed.
Thank you to everyone from OPZ. Have a good evening, all of you who don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2021 as amended.
Bill Number 2021, An Ordnance Concerning Flood Plain Management, Erosion and Sediment Control and Stormwater Management, Subdivision and Development, Forest Conservation.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. So we've spent some time already as a council talking about this bill, and I really hope that my colleagues will support it this evening. As you know, this came about because at least one instance in my district and some others that I think we're going to be able to hear about this evening, where a developer, despite our wonderful efforts and our collaborative efforts in the Forest Conservation Act last year, was that two years ago? It's running together, I think that was 2019, late. But anyway, our collaborative efforts pulled together, I think, a really excellent bill. But unfortunately, we identified that there's one little gap in the bill, and that is the gap that if a developer has not yet submitted their development application, they are not subject to the penalties or the provisions of the Forest Conservation Act. And so my bill intends to close that gap, intends to say, if you have, if you are clearing, involved in clearing of 5,000 square feet or more, then you still ought to pay the penalties. You still ought to be subject to the provisions of the Forest Conservation Act, even if you didn't submit a development application. My understanding, as all of you know, we have created several amendments based on the suggestions of constituents, concerns of constituents, suggestions from all of you. And we've incorporated those into the bill that is now before you, the amended bill that is now before you tonight. So, you know, we upped from the original 1,500 square feet to 5,000 square feet, which I will repeat over and over again, is larger than the size of an NBA basketball court. So I think it's fair to expect citizens who own large pieces of property to expect that they need to go to inspections and permits before they clear a basketball court's worth of trees. I feel like, as we were just discussing when we talked about the general development plan, this was one of the biggest concerns I certainly heard while campaigning, was that we're losing too much of our, we're losing too much of our forested land. We have development that's happening too rapidly. And we can't expect a different outcome if we settle for the status quo. The Forest Conservation Act obviously is a huge step in terms of changing the status quo and in terms of moving a new direction. But if we leave this gaping hole, I think that unscrupulous developers will take advantage of it. I know that there are wonderful developers out there that are very mindful and very, what's the word I'm trying to say, very conscientious in terms of how their work impacts the environment. But I don't think we can rely on all developers to do that. And that's why I think it's important that we put this provision in place, this bill in place, to make sure that there's accountability, that there are preventative, that this will act as a deterrent to folks that might try and clear, again, a basketball court's worth of trees. I can't imagine, first of all, I don't know if my property is even big enough to fit a basketball court on it, but I can't imagine wanting to clear that many trees without thinking I just could do it without talking to anyone. You know, we're not, this is not every man is an island, and, you know, we are a collaborative and collective community, and we rely on each other, including to protect our forests because we need those to breathe, and animals need those as places to live. And, you know, ultimately, our waterways need the work of the natural areas to stay clean and stay healthy themselves. So I see this as, you know, just, I feel like this is something we sort of already agreed upon when we passed the Forest Conservation Act, except we just are closing this little loophole. So I urge my colleagues to vote for the bill tonight.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is our Environmental Policy Director, Mr. Johnston, our Director of Inspection and Permits, Mr. Africa from DPW, Mr. Michelson from Law, Ms. Kenny. Councilwoman Rodvian covered, I think, most of the important points. I'll add a few bits to it. The Bill 20-21, it really does build on the groundbreaking forest protections contained within the Forest Conservation Ordinance that this council passed. The Forest Conservation Ordinance made it illegal to clear trees within our largest intact priority forests. Unfortunately, as was mentioned, those protections only apply after a landowner submits an application to develop the land. That means that trees could be cleared in a priority forest up to the day before the application is submitted, and the applicant would bypass the Forest Conservation Ordinance, facing a minimal fine for grading without a permit. This bill closes that loophole and ensures our largest forests are protected with or without an application to develop the land. And this bill, as amended, protects individual homeowners and homeowner associations, protects their ability to clear trees around their houses and communities without a permit. Only larger scale, I like the basketball court analogy to picture how big it is operation, clearing operations. And I do want to, again, thank Councilwoman Rodvian for sponsoring the legislation and working with us to get it in a place where we think represents the right measured approach to close the loophole and protect our most important priority forests, and hope you will agree. Mr. Johnston is here, as well as the team, for detailed questions. Mr. Johnston, if you think I missed anything? Mister Johnston is here as well as the team for detailed questions. Mister Johnston, if you think I missed anything or have anything else to add, please, uh, add it.
Thank you, Mister Baron. Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director, um, for the County Executive's Office. I, I think that you and the Councilwoman covered most of it. I'll just, um, kind of repeat, one of the, the most important points, I think, is the bill is amended in front of you today, uh, shows you all of the amendments that, that were approved that incorporate the great ideas that you and the administration heard from homeowners associations and stakeholders. Um, and, and to be clear, what it really does now is home in on two things. It homes in on, on those, those clearings, larger clearings, five thousand square feet or greater in size. Um, and to be clear, you already need a permit to clear five thousand square feet in this county. So there's not a larger domain of homeowners or business owners or property owners who will need to go get a permit because of this bill. Five thousand square feet remains the threshold for going to get a, a grading permit for clearing. But then the other thing that it does, of course, as, as uh, mo- both Mister Baron and Councilwoman Rodvian said, is homes in on only those priority forests, our seventy-five acre or greater forests that were protected so well under the Forest Conservation Ordinance. Um, with that, that's all that I wanted to add and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time? Mister Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mister Johnson, you may be the person to answer this or maybe someone from inspections and permits, but I'd sent an email back on March twenty-fifth where I'd asked, um, I repeatedly have heard that the administration has said that there are a number of projects and, and places where, uh, we've seen clearing that otherwise would have been prohibited or would have been, um, penalized or there would have been greater, you know, fines or, or anything like that. If this bill had been in place, I'm aware only of the Monticello, excuse me, Monticello property in Annapolis that happened recently in terms of situations where there may have been a different outcome. I had asked, uh, back then, if I could get a list of everywhere in the last five years that we had seen a situation that would have been impacted by this bill in a positive way. And I yet, I've yet to receive that. And so I guess I'm just not clear on where else this is, this is being impacted. Cause I've heard you all repeatedly say, this is gonna impact a lot of properties. This is, you know, a major problem. This is something that's happened over and over. I'm just trying to understand where.
Sure. Sorry, Mister Baron.
No, I was gonna kick it to you and maybe to Miss Kenny, but go ahead, Mister Johnston.
I, I was gonna do the same, uh, Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. Councilman Volkey, you're absolutely right that the, that the one that, that we all remember that was in the papers, the most recent was Monticello. And that that certainly prompted the legislation from, from the Councilwoman, I believe. But I'm gonna hand it over to Miss Kenny from the Office of Law, who, um, anytime that I say, what have people done right or wrong in the past? She's the one that I go to, cause she usually files those, that paperwork in the court. So, Miss Ken.
Thank you. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Mister Volkey, I can answer your question, I think, in more general terms. I think IMP can talk more about some of the specific violations that the county has had. But I know over the last five years, you know, I would need more than two hands to count the number of cases that the county has had with large scale clearing violations, you know, the types of violations where we are counting the number of tree stumps that have been cut down and the area that's been disturbed is very, very large. I would say, um, our office handles at least five to twelve of those at least each year. And that's not counting e- even the critical area violations. Most of those would be outside of the critical area where there's large scale clearing, you know, more than just a couple of trees, but very, very large areas. I'm aware of, I believe, um, two or three other situations in the last year or two where there has been clearing in priority forests, I believe, prior to a development application being submitted to the county. And again, the Office of Law doesn't necessarily see all the violations because if they do come into compliance voluntarily, the Office of Law does not generally see all those. Um, but again, there are a number of cases each year that we handle. I'm not sure whether the five to twelve number that I'm, I know that we handle each year are all in priority forests or, um, all involve specimen trees, but there is a, a lar- again, a large number of, of these large scale clearing cases that we do deal with. And some of them, I would imagine, probably have involved priority forests, but that wasn't something that we looked at, at the time, cause that was no, a separate, um, area to look at as far as the violation goes.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D Two. I have a, a comment and I guess what, what will end up being a question. Bill twenty twenty-one, while it does, um, talk about and, and address clearing and violations on those in a, uh, from five thousand square feet to that window in between five thousand square feet and, and, uh, twenty thousand square feet. While grading, it also adds a mitigation requirement for that land use, landowner. Whether it's a small, small scale development project or just someone building, building their, their future home on, you know, their two acre parcel. So it does add, while it does tackle the clearing and violation issue, it is also adding regulation and mitigation to, um, those smaller projects. If you can't meet the mitigation requirement, then you're going to be forced to pay, um, a fee in lieu. Which I'm still struggling with, um, for our, our smaller, our smaller projects. Even in, I, I realize that, uh, five thousand square feet is the size of a basketball court. But if you're building a home on your two acre parcel, um, which this, this council, when we discussed Forest Con and passed that unanimously, we were, we made sure that minimum parcel was, was five acres. So we're adding, while it is taking care of a clearing and violation issue, it is also adding tree regulation and mitigation requirements that could be, uh, depending on where you see it, deemed onerous and expensive. So I wanted to know if the administration had any comments to that concern.
Pete Baron, the administration. Mister Johnston, do you wanna take that?
Sure. Thank you, Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. Thank you, Councilwoman Pickard. Really good question there. Is what does this do for the small individual family homes? And, and, um, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, anyone else from, from, um, Office of Law or inspections and Permits. But I don't think that it does apply in that situation. And the reason being, if you are building a, a single family home, you do have to go through Article seventeen and through that process. Um, and the second thing that I will, so then you get kicked into the Forest Con and you are correct. If, if it's below, um, a one acre property and below twenty thousand square feet of clearing, you, you are exempt from that. And then the other thing that I know that, um, Miss Kenny cannot, can answer from Office of Law is, um, would the Forest Conservation Ordinance trump, if you will, this ordinance in situations where there's some disagreement? And the case, in, in, in that case, yes, the Forest Conservation Ordinance as see, is seen as more restrictive. And by law, in Article sixteen, you go to the more restrictive environmental law. So you would again, get kicked into the Forest Conservation Ordinance. Um, I, I hope that answers it. But Miss Kenny or Mister Africa, do you have anything to add on kind of these, these smaller lots?
Yeah, this is Mister Africa. The, the requirement for, for replanting, um, is more stringent for those who violate it. But those who comply with it, uh, had certain provisions where they were not required to replace the replanting as, as part of the, uh, the construction of their home. So it's really, uh, we feel that it's not really, uh, do a big burden on, on the homeowner who, who does little development.
Mister Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I guess Mister Africa and maybe Mister Johnson, I'm, I'm just not clear why it's been over a month and there's been no ability. I heard Miss Kenny talk about some of these projects that apparently would have been, uh, impacted differently if, if this bill had been in place, but I'm not exactly clear on why, when I requested any properties that this impacted in the last five years to get that information, I'm just not clear why that information was never provided. So I, I mean, it's, I understand people are busy and I get it, but it's been a month. This is a bill that's in front of us and I'm just not clear on why I couldn't get that information. So if I can get an answer on that, I appreciate it.
Sure. Mister Johnston again for, or Matt Johnston for the Environmental Policy Director for the County Executive. Mister Volkey, all I can do is apologize and say you're absolutely right. A lot of us were also working on the general development plan. And whenever I heard about this today, about your outstanding question, I immediately got on the phone and called the people whom I know would know the answer and tried to prepare to come tonight to answer that for you. So apologies, but I, I hope that tonight we've shown good faith and we will be more responsive in the future. Thank you.
I certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there, yes, go ahead, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, I just wanna piggyback off a question that Councilwoman Pickard asked because I think I'm still confused. So if a homeowner has a two acre lot and, um, they run afoul of this and, and clear, you know, before they've had their, their grading plan approved. But you're suggesting then that this, this would not be an issue under this bill?
So it depends on the type of development that's occurring on that lot. So most of the grading permits that are going to be for five thousand square feet or up to twenty thousand square feet, those are not your single family homes. Those are for, uh, uh, a swimming pool or gr- or other things like that. And actually, those would be very large as well. Um, you would get kicked through a different process for the single family homes is what I was trying to say, which would kick you over into, you said a two acre lot? Well, that's more than forty thousand square feet. If you're into a site development plan, you are then into Article seventeen and you are into the Forest Conservation Ordinance.
But what if you do it before your site development plan? Isn't that the whole issue here?
Y- yes, that's correct. So if you were to clear before, um, the site development plan, yes, there would be a penalty with this. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thanks. So you're right. I mean, when I talked about building a house, that would put you into site development planning. This is all very confusing for some of us laypeople. That is correct. However, if you're, whatever it is you're wanting to do on your property that only requires a grading permit, I guess more to my point, you are required, it's a new requirement via this bill to mitigate beyond what is currently in the code. And I'm concerned that it's onerous. The other thing I'm concerned about with this bill is the big loophole that we've been talking about since this was in the paper, was the big bad developer who clear cuts before they get into site development plan and then only have to pay a five hundred dollar fine. Well, now if they clear in violation, now it's a ten thousand dollar fine. And the big bad developer can really, to be honest, can eat that. It's the small guy, the Individual Homeowners Association, or the small, the small guy in the process that it's gonna hit hard, not just with the clearing and violation fine, but also then with the onerous mitigation that isn't currently required in the code as it is before we get to twenty twenty-one. So are, does this bill go after the bad actor, the true bad actor we're trying to address? Um, I think it does a little bit based on state code that limits clearing and violation fines. Does a little, but what it really does is it ensnares the small guy. Um, and I'm, I'm still a little concerned about it.
Ms. Rodvian, do you wanna speak to that question or have a separate comment?
Um, I wanted to speak to that question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, actually, this is sort of a question about my own bill and I, uh, because of my, um, you know, failure to have full recollection of all the details of Forest Conservation Act. But, um, assuming that a, um, a homeowner wanted to, um, have any sort of clearing over five thousand feet, as long as they went through the application process and basically got a permit to do it, in that range between five thousand and twenty thousand, they would not be subject to the, um, they would fall in the Cor- Forest Conservation Act and not under this bill.
Go ahead, Mister Johnson.
Sure. So just to clarify again, what, it's site development plan. Once you trigger a site development plan, that is absolutely correct, Councilwoman Rodvian. You would go into, uh, the Forest Conservation Ordinance. If, if I could, going back to, um, Councilwoman Pickard's question as well, um, to talk a little bit about another way that this bill was amend- amended by this council to make sure that homeowners were not caught with a large fine or anything like that. There are factors in Article sixteen, which, uh, Greg Africa, uh, Director of Inspections and Permits, already takes into account within the critical area when there's a violation. And I think those factors are very important for, um, inspections and permits to consider whenever there's any kind of violation. And, and that is kind of the severity of it and the, the, the negligence on the part of the, uh, and knowing negligence on the part of the property owner. And so what those are used for in the critical area is oftentimes not applying the, the largest fine at all to individual homeowners who unknowingly, um, tripped up in this, in clearing in the critical area. So those factors will now be assessed by the director if there is ever a violation, um, under this law. And I think that's really important to have that, that deference.
Okay, I think we, Ms. Fiedler, I, I was just thinking, we have just enough time to get through the public hearing before we have to take a break at eight o'clock. Do you have a quick question?
Uh, I can wait.
Okay. Um, so, Madam Secretary, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number twenty twenty-one as amended. Do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything in the, uh, Dropbox or through the online tool.
Okay. We have two individuals signed up to speak on Bill number twenty twenty-one as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. First is Michael Lofton.
Uh, good evening. I'm Mike Lofton. Um, I live on Pullinghouse Road, Harwood. I'm a resident of District Seven. I'm speaking tonight as a board member of Growth Action Network of Inveronble County and is a coalition of community and civic associations, environmental groups and individuals with the goal of assuring that growth and development in the county is well planned, will not harm current neighborhoods or the environment, is fiscally sound and will enhance the quality of life for current residents. We have about fifty-five individual members and thirty member organizations. The member organizations, uh, represent about twenty thousand county residents. We strongly support Bill twenty twenty-one and express our appreciation to Councilmember Rodvian for introducing this correction to a significant loophole in the county's forest conservation regulations. In addition, we urge each council member to consider, as, uh, Ms. Pickard pointed out, whether the penalties imposed are sufficient to constitute a meaningful deterrent to violators or just a routine cost of business. And if I have a second left and somebody would forgive me this, I gotta say Elizabeth Rossberg did a heck of a job on the GDP. So that's, I just wanna add that.
Thank you, Mister Lofton.
Yes, thank you.
Had forty more seconds, but that's okay. Okay, second, we have John Sarkowski.
Thank, thank you. I'm humbled to have the time to speak to you. Um, retired American sailor, been in Annapolis area for nearly forty years, enjoying our environment. Uh, live in a wooded, um, landscape of safer community. And I wanna thank, uh, Councilman Rodman for taking, Rodman, for taking the time, um, recently to go over some of the issues that our community had. Uh, see, seeing the amendments, I, I really like what's been done. It's nice to be listened to. I think, I think maybe the changes that Matt, Matthew Johnson had recommended, I see them in here. And, uh, so I fully support the bill the way it's been presented. The, the only concern i- is again, it's, it's about the small guy. The layman not understanding all the intricacies of, of what's going on. And one of the recommendations when we had our discussion was to, um, make sure that there was better transparency and communication of what make sure that there was better transparency and communication of what actions, what penalties, potential penalties. So when the average homeowner association like I belong to or a homeowner, there, there needs to be clarity of, of what may happen because of the actions of this bill. I don't know exactly how that would be done. There was a suggestion that maybe an enhancement to some websites would be done. Um, anyway, so I just wanted to thank you for this. Uh, thanks for the hard work. But I think this is a bill that needs to move forward and I appreciate uh, what's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill Number Twenty Twenty One as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Twenty Twenty One as amended.
Bill Number Twenty Twenty One, Inordinance Concerning Floodplain Management, Erosion and Sediment Control and Stormwater Management, Subdivision and Development, Forest Conservation.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler, do you want to ask your question?
Yes, um, appreciate that. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So um, I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, Ms. Pickard, Ms. Hare. Um, and I did speak to the sponsor this evening, Ms. Rodbyan. Um, I certainly have an interest in closing the loophole um, that created a specific situation. Um, but I do have concerns and I share concerns of my colleagues. And I think for the general public who is watching, the reason that we are asking so many questions is through the various um, amendments, rounds of amendments on this bill. The bill is an entirely different bill from when it was first introduced. So as I expressed to Councilwoman Rodbyan, in a, in a perfect world, I'd like to see us scratch it and start over. Um, and really work collaboratively to get this to the point where it is specifically addressing the loophole without hurting or compromising the little guy. So um, appreciate the conversation this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Rodbyan.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I actually had two things, but one was to ask, um, if it, if uh, the chair would allow to ask um, Mr. Johnson or perhaps IMP to discuss some of the um, forthcoming mapping changes that would be made in order to make um, you know, make the outcome of, of a potential clearing um, more obvious, to know when, when are you uh, in that critical era, excuse me, the priority forest? When have you, um, you know, what, where is the priority forest? And, and how have, how far have you gone towards getting to that five thousand feet threshold?
Uh, Greg Africa. Greg Africa Inspections and Permits. Uh, upon the passage of this bill, we will immediately began, began working to create a webpage dedicated to tree clearing. And this page will provide an easy to use flowchart to determine if tree clearing triggers this law or any other laws like the particular area law. Um, this would provide guidance to, to those who uh, intend to do some clearing in their properties.
And, and Chair, if I may, Matt, thank you. Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director, just to add on to that part of that website, thank you, Mr. Africa, would be a map um, to the best of our ability of the estimated priority forest, which would just be a signal, if you're a property owner, that you, that you might um, fall under this. And then it would be a process between inspections and permits to look at your permit and de- determine if you fell under this or not. So there will be a map on there as well. Thank you.
Ms. Rodbyan, your flag's still up. Did you?
Yes.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I had a second point. Um, so actually, I wanted to address one of the um, items mentioned by one of our speakers in the public hearing um, was regarding the uh, ten thousand dollar fine. I've actually had a number of people saying that fine is way too low. Um, Councilwoman Pickard mentioned that that could almost be absorbed by many developers. Unfortunately, that fine is dictated, the, the limit of that fine is dictated by state law. So we cannot um, go above the ten thousand dollar threshold. Um, I think we're probably getting near to a vote on this, and so I'll just make, um, you know, make a final plea to my colleagues. Um, you know, I think this is an issue that all of us heard about um, during our campaigns. Um, and I think, you know, our, our, our voters, our residents, our constituents did not elect us to continue with the status quo, to, you know, allow this kind of clearing um, to continue to happen at the rate and the pace with the ease that it's currently happening. Um, you know, forest land trees in this county are on a steady decline. And um, you know, unless we take pretty significant measures to stop that decline or to require mitigation where um, clearing does incur, we're going to just going, you know, go down to the bottom. I mean, the line is headed towards zero. So um, you know, sort of sticking with the status quo, um, I don't feel like is what we were elected to do. I feel like, well, actually, I'm pretty sure my colleague, uh, Chris Trumbauer would have supported this. Well, I can't speak for him. But I, I know that, that my constituents very greatly appreciated um, his work with respect to environmental issues. So I won't try to um, you know, attribute a particular opinion on this bill uh, to Mr. Trumbauer. But um, anyway, I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that he, he certainly was respected in that regard. Um, but I do feel like we need to do something different as, as a county, that we need a course correction. And if we just continue to say, um, you know, we did so much work with the Forest Conservation Act, and if we allow that work to be undermined by not clearing this loophole, um, you know, I think we're, and especially now that we've sort of opened the jar on this issue, uh, where we've sort of uh, taken a bite at this issue, um, you know, that, the, that number of five to twelve, um, you know, illegal clearings a year that end up in court as um, uh, Ms. Kelly mentioned from the Office of Law. I, I think we can only expect that to grow. Um, so this will function as a deterrent. Um, and I, I, I think that's an important deterrent, even if, you know, the ten thousand dollar state limit is not nothing. Um, so I hope that, you know, that, that indeed will um, have some impact. I would also argue um, that five thousand square uh, feet is, is somehow the little guy. Um, if you were going to build um, any sort of um, home or swimming pool or driveway that hit or addition to your current home that hit that five thousand square foot threshold, um, I have a hard time calling that person a little guy. That person very likely is um, going to be working with knowledgeable builders. Um, and I would expect builders to stay on top of changes to the code and that they would be aware of this. In fact, I'm sure builders are already very aware of this five thousand square foot threshold with respect to the Forest Conservation Law. So if um, a project is hitting that five thousand uh, square foot threshold, that should be a red flag for um, anyone who's working um, in this, you know, in this field, in construction that might be bringing down trees. So um, you know, I don't really think this hits the little guy. I think five thousand square feet, I mean, think about a five thousand square foot home. Where not, uh, where simply the footprint is five thousand square feet. That is, that is not a small footprint for a home. Um, or a driveway that was uh, five thousand square feet, that would be a very long driveway on a very large property. Um, or a swimming pool or something like that. That's, that's, in my opinion, that's not the little guy. That's, that's someone who can afford to um, you know, follow the rules and make sure that they understand the rules. That's not an innocent homeowner. So I, I really hope that um, that my colleagues will support this bill. Um, I, I can't, you know, I, I know what happened in my, um, in my district. This, um, it was, it, it was quite, um, there was quite a lot of outcry um, by people that lived near the Monticello community. Um, I'm, I'm trying to save you from that same fate, from having to deal with that same outcry. And um, please vote for this bill. You won't have to deal with that outcry if you support this bill. Um, and if you, I'm not, you know, this is not, I just worry that if we don't uh, pass this bill, that now we're sort of giving the green light. You know, we're saying, oh, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna penalize someone who does this, and you'll just get a five hundred dollar fine, which is, you know, very insignificant for um, for most uh, developers. So with that, I, I ask for your support and uh, thank you for taking the time to listen here.
Um, great timing, Ms. Rodden. We must take our break now for our live captioner. So may I have a motion to recess for fifteen minutes and let's return at eight fifteen? So move.
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing not everyone is I. Okay, eight fifteen, we'll see you back then. Thanks.
Madam Secretary, when you are ready, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pusky.
Still here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Schewitt.
Present.
Oh, Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Madam Chair, everyone is here.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Bill Number 2021 as amended? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just had one follow-up question about, one of the comments from public testimony was about kind of how we would get any of this information out. And it's actually a topic that has come up recently for me with my constituents with respect to other bills that have been passed in the last year. I have a constituent right now, for example, who's being charged a penalty and interest on the short-term rental tax that he was not aware of at the time it passed due to, you know, COVID and all that other thing. And so I'm trying to figure out what exactly IMP's plan would be to kind of make this known and understood. I mean, putting up a website is, is one thing, but people have to know to go to the website and to see it. And whether there's any kind of detailed plan in place for that aspect of it.
Yes, Greg Africa inspections and permits. We have a series of official communicates to, to the general public called the, the Blue Notices. We always release one when there's an important message to, to push. Any changes in our procedures, any new laws? You mentioned the short-term rental. Once it was passed, we, we released a short-term, I'm sorry, we released a blue notice announcing that. And what are the specific procedures to follow? So as I said earlier, in response to Ms. Radvian, about the website and the mapping, mapping application and links, links located into that webpage. We are also in the process of utilizing Constant Contact. It's, it's a program that, that is used by the community and constituent services where some, where some folks can subscribe to, to receive regular notices or certain types of notices and, and news from IMP. So we, we intend to push this out as much, as, as much as we can.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm not exactly sure who would answer this, but I just want to verify a couple of things about this bill and existing county law. First, I, I believe that under the Forest Conservation Act, and you all can tell me if I'm not getting this right, we've defined a priority forest as one that is seventy-five acres of contiguous forest. Is that right?
Sure. For the record, Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. Under the Forest Conservation Act, that is correct. One of the areas of priority forests is certainly a seventy-five acre priority forest. There are also specimen trees and, and other riparian areas and such.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And the state laws, I understand it defines a priority forest area as a hundred acres. So we're actually twenty-five acres lower than that threshold. Is that right?
That is not correct. I do not know where that would be located in state law. I have not seen that. If that is in reference to FIDS habitat, there are various definitions of FIDS habitat. Elsewhere in ARCODE is a fifty-acre definition, but this council through the Forest Conservation Ordinance decided on a seventy-five acre definition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. If I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And so just understanding that when we're looking at what this legislation is designed to achieve, it would be applying to those seventy-five acre or more stands of forest. Is that right? That would be all that it's applying to?
That is correct.
Okay. And one of the things that I've heard you mention is that you all are working on a website to identify where you believe that these priority forest areas exist in the county so that a homeowner or anybody who is interested in finding out where they are could easily ascertain what qualifies and what does not under these regulations. Is that right?
That is correct.
When do you anticipate that you'll have that ready?
Very good question. Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. The original map, the first cut at it, is in the Sensitive Resource Policies area map of the General Development Plan, which is a very fine-toothed map that took tree canopy, one meter by one meter tree canopy data and really broke it down into these seventy-five acre contiguous parcels. But through this process, understanding that there needs to be some border between the edge of a forest and the, and the, and the interior of the forest, that map is being refined a little bit to set all of those edges back at least thirty-five feet from impervious surfaces and to round off the edges so that, so that it, it has not very many fingers in it, but it's more of a rounded interior forest map. And again, the last thing that I'll say about that map is that it will be a good guide, a very good guide, but it will not be the final say. That map is not regulatory in a situation inspections and permits will need to confirm on the ground.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So I, I don't know if I heard you say that exactly, but you said there's something in the GDP that's a good iteration of that. When exactly do we think that map will be sort of operational? And if it's not something that is regulatory and actually in place, then how could a homeowner or anybody for that matter with any certainty know whether they are or are not in a priority forest area?
Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. Again, good questions. So the map as it exists already, the first attempt is in the GDP and is served up under the Resource Sensitive Policy area that can be found online on the BP website. The iteration of the map, I actually received another iteration right before this call from Planning and Zoning. They are not stopping any of their work, even though we were all still working on the GDP. So that iterative process is continuing and I'll, we'll be getting those, those maps out and served once we're comfortable with what they look like. To your second question, how could a homeowner know for certain? Well, nobody knows for certain until the experts go on the ground for any of these things, whether it's a wetland, a steep slope, or a priority forest, you need an expert to go on, on the ground and assess that. We're never going to let a map dictate that tough decision. So the map is a good guide and it will be served up on the website. But the final say has to come from an expert within inspections and permits, working with the homeowners association and their experts that they would hire, or a homeowner and their experts that they would hire.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate you going back and forth with me on this. It's helping me to understand the bill. So I just, I want to kind of follow up on one thing that you mentioned there. So you said that in any situation, if a homeowner was to want a definitive answer, they would basically need, I'm guessing inspections and permits to come out and tell them for sure you're good or you're not. So one of the things that we talked about is that you're exempt from a site development plan if you're under a certain threshold. But if you wind up being more, then you do have to do that, not a site development, a standard grading plan, excuse me. So my concern is if you're a homeowner and you're out there and you happen to be clearing, and I know that we think these aren't like regular people. These are, you know, sort of bad actors, but assuming for a moment it is a regular person and they are in a property that has a lot of land and they do, you know, unintentionally clear more than five thousand square feet in an area that they looked on a map and didn't look like it was a priority forest area, but then it turned out it did. Seems like the penalties for that are pretty heavy. What discretion, if any, is vested in inspections and permits to kind of look at that? Because I've had situations where inspections and permits has levied fines and required mitigation for constituents. And I've gotten a lot of basically blowback from them that inspections and permits isn't working with them. You know, they, they've admitted it's an honest mistake and basically people have said, too bad, that's the law. So I just want to understand that because that to me is, maybe it's too theoretical, you know, maybe that's, I don't remember what the term is, but something that's never going to happen, right? There, there are like, people use certain statements for that. But I think it could happen. And so that's why I want to know.
Or again, Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. And, and I'll let Mr. Africa chime in after I do, since he would make the final decision on any one of those. But I will say that the law or the bill as amended goes right to your question, Councilman Volkey, and includes references to discretionary language that is used in the critical area for violations. So the, the director has to take into account the gravity of the violation and any willfulness or negligence involved in the violation before assessing penalties. So I think that your question was, well, hey, I looked at a map. I didn't see my priority forests in it. I would hope that that would be included and would not be a willful violation.
Greg, Greg Africa inspections and permits. Matt said it very succinctly. In addition, we, we also have the same factors that we consider when we apply to cases within the critical area. So we're using that model to, to determine the, the gravity of the violation and the willingness and negligence of involved in the violation.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I, I appreciate that discretion. I actually, the situation that I'm referencing was a few years ago. And I had brought it up when we were doing the Forest Conservation Bill to talk about some of the consequences of what our actions on the council look like. And that was a clearing in the critical area where there was no real discretion given or, or kind of real bending. And then in that case, a sixteen-year-old had cleared off some area in the critical area, thinking he was doing something nice for his mom, sort of clearing an area so she could have a, a clear view to the water and be able to kind of sit on a swing and look at it. And instead, the county came out and slapped them with pretty big fines and made them replant a ton of trees. So I'm just not convinced that that actual discretion exists, but I hope I'm wrong. But that's, that's one example I know, which is very concerning to me and, and I'm here. I do want to just clarify a little bit in terms of the square footage question. So if a project under this bill, if it passes, clears less than twenty thousand square feet, currently I believe that they're exempt from the forest conservation requirements. This would bring them into that and require that they do a one-to-one mitigation. Is that right?
Matt Johnson, Environmental Policy Director. It all depends on whether or not that project is going to go through the site development plan process. If it does, that goes into Article Seventeen and Forest Con, and that automatically trumps the, the Article Sixteen provisions that you're talking about today. It's only for projects that do not go into the SDP that clear above five thousand square feet and we're already going to get a grading permit under the current law that would trigger this, this, these provisions in a priority forest area.
Okay. And so how do you know whether they're going to get an SDP or not? Like, how would you know the answer to that?
I would defer to Mr. Africa, or if Mr. Kai Ziegler is here as well, that's a process that they are more versed in than myself.
Greg Africa inspections and permits, we, we would have to go through a process of quest, of asking certain questions that, that would determine the, the ultimate intent of, of the permitting and take it from there. It's, it's hard for me to deal with hypotheticals at this moment. I, I'd rather deal with the specifics of a particular case.
Mr. Kai Ziegler.
Good evening. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Mr. Africa is correct. It's kind of a step-by-step process to determine whether or not one has to go through a site development plan. But as it typically would be, if there was any proposal to increase florary, or the term that we use here, leasable space, causes someone to enter into the fray of, of needing to do a site development plan. Additionally, it can involve how much clearing is being proposed. And when stormwater management is required to offset the clearing. And when stormwater management is required to offset the clearing that occurred, which is five thousand square feet. So it's very hard to give you hypotheticals on this.
Miss Stewart, did you have your hand up and I missed it? I was just your flag traveling across the screen. Okay, Mr. Volkey? Or, oh, no, Miss Stewart.
Sorry, my question or my statement doesn't have to do with what, exactly what they're talking about. I have a different question. So if somebody wants to continue on with the same subject, I will.
No, you go ahead, please.
Okay. I had two questions, um, Mr. Johnson. And one is that you, I think you said the priority forest is already defined in the forest conservation law. But when you do a search of our existing code, priority forest doesn't come up as being defined anywhere. That's question number one. Second question is the discretion that's being talked about to consider different factors and what kind of a fine might be levied um, only applies in the critical area. So does that mean that there's no discretion outside the critical area?
Thank you for both those questions. Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. On the first question, you are correct that that exact term, priority forest, does not show up in Article sixteen or Article seventeen currently. In Article seventeen, the section of all the types of priority forests are called priority forest retention areas. So those are the areas that you cannot clear if you are entering site development plan or, or a subdivision without a modification to the law, period. So you cannot clear in a seventy-five acre forest without a modification to the law, um, under Article seventeen. This uh, bill takes the most, the, the largest and most intact um, piece of that, that seventy-five acre rule, which was uh, well negotiated and long negotiated by this council and says those are really our most uh, important forests. That's what comes into Article sixteen. And now we're gonna go ahead and define it for Article sixteen for these purposes. Um, so that's where that comes from, Miss Stewart. And then on the, the second question, um, I'm sorry, can you remind me on the second question?
Sure. Uh, the second question was if the discretionary factors that we've been talking about only apply in the critical area, does that mean there's no discretion outside the critical area?
So thank you. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Africa on discretion, but I will say that in this bill, the amended bill, it specifically references those critical area discretionary, that discretionary language and says it now applies for this section of the code as well.
Uh, Mr. Africa, uh, Greg Africa, Inspection and Permits. We do uh, apply some discretion also to the extent uh, allowed by, by the code on non-critical areas.
Thank you. I, I see now that applicability outside the critical area. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, so if you had a property that's under forty thousand square feet currently, does that qualify under the Forest Conservation Act for any clearing at all? Under current law?
Not. That would be exempt from Article seventeen Forest Conservation.
Okay. And does this bill change that at all to where a lot that is under forty thousand square feet in size, so just a little under an acre, um, where it would be subject to any of these requirements?
That one is such a specific hypothetical that I'm gonna ask Ms. Kelly to address it. Ms. Kelly Kenny from Office of Law?
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Let me make sure I understand the question, which I think is, does this bill change the applicability of the forest conservation law to any other types of properties? For example, any properties that are less than forty thousand square feet or anything of that nature? Is that what your question is?
Very close, but not exactly. And if you ask that question, you're gonna answer, you're gonna give me a different answer than the one I'm going for. So my question is, would this bill, as drafted and if passed, be different than the Forest Conservation Bill? So the Forest Conservation Bill does not apply to a property under forty thousand square feet in terms of any clearing, grading, things like that. Would the same be the case under this bill? Would this apply, this bill, to a lot that is under forty thousand square feet in size?
Yes, it would apply to a lot that's under forty thousand square feet. It, but it would only apply if the grading is more than five thousand square feet and grading permit is required.
Sure. So if you had a largely forested lot and you own just a little under an acre and you go and you clear five thousand square feet, which is feasible, at that point you would be triggering this bill.
Correct. But even without this bill, you would still require a grading permit. So if you clear more than five thousand square feet, whether this bill passes or not, a grading permit is required.
But without this bill, the penalty for doing that clearing would be the five hundred dollar fine of doing something without a grading permit. With this bill, it would be significantly higher.
Uh, Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, I think that is correct, although you always have to remember that you don't pay that ten thousand dollar fine unless you do that grading illegally. So if you do it correctly and you apply for a grading permit, then you don't pay that fine. And so there's no different burden on, on anybody. It's only if you don't apply for the grading permit, then you would be imposed that fine.
We, thank you, Ms. Kenny. And that, that kind of gets to my crazy hypothetical of a homeowner who has less than forty thousand square feet and some of their properties in a priority forest area and they clear more than five thousand, they didn't realize they did it. So, okay, thank you.
Greg Africa, Inspections and Permits. Uh, Miss Kenny, isn't the exact la- language up to ten thousand and not just a flat fee of ten, flat, flat fine of ten thousand?
So Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney, I just wanted to look at the bill again and double check. That is correct. It says a fine not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D two. I understand the, the, the questions my colleague is asking. Um, the one thing that does change with, with Bill twenty twenty-one is the mitigation. So that small project that's currently not subject to forest conservation, even if they do everything by the book according to this bill, they now have an additional mitigation requirement to do a one-to-one replanting. That's the thing that I'm still hung up on. So even if they go by the book, they need to clear their land to build whatever it is they wanna build or um, under, you know, a small property, now they've got to replant one-to-one. And if they can't, because of whatever structure they're, they're creating or swimming pool they're creating, now they have to pay the fee in lieu, which is, which is different than the issue at hand that with this closing of the loophole, which was clearing in violation. The original intent was of this bill, uh, was to get at that clearing in violation and the sponsor has taken, and they've taken it a step farther to do tackle clearing in violation, but also adding additional mitigation, uh, tree regulation. That's sort of the sticking point I'm stuck on. Um, sticking point I'm stuck on. Um, as well as, I didn't wanna go down the rabbit holes of mapping and definitions because the definition of priority forest in a, now in Article sixteen is different than how we talk about it in other articles of the code. And then the mapping, we're not actually defining in the code the criteria of the mapping. But there is gonna be a map, but it's not regulatory. But if you kind of think you might be near the priority forest, now you've gotta hire somebody to determine. Um, so the burden is on you because the maps aren't regulatory and the criteria that created the maps aren't part of the priority forest definition in the code. So I just, it's just a little messy for me still. I'd love to take another crack at this. Um, when we could really identify the problem we're trying to solve and kind of not muddy up the code further with all these new terms or conflicting terms. It's very confusing.
Are, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number twenty twenty-one as amended.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Nay.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Four in the negative, three in the affirmative. Bill number twenty twenty-one as amended has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill number twenty-seven twenty-one.
Bill number twenty-seven twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Permits for Use of County Rights of Way Maintenance Permit and Inspection Fees.
Thank you. As a reminder to everyone, the public hearing on Bill number twenty-seven twenty-one was concluded at our last meeting and the vote was held because it was past midnight and so we couldn't vote on the bill. This is an administration bill. Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. I have Mr. Beckier from DPW, Mr. Africa from IMP, Ms. McQuade from Finance, and Ms. Kenny is sticking around for this one too. Um, as we discussed, I believe both in a work session and uh, at the last council meeting when, when the clock struck midnight and this bill turned into a pumpkin. Uh, the current code, uh, provisions mandate that utility companies pay a deposit in advance to cover estimated permit and inspection fees. There are currently no fines assessed on companies which fail to pay those, those fees on time. This has uh, resulted in large outstanding balance of funds as companies remain delinquent. The average del- uh, delinquency, um, when this uh, bill was contemplated was fifty-one days. Uh, this bill moves away from deposits in favor of quarterly billing and late payments will be assessed a ten percent fine, similar to other utilities in the county. We ask you know the bill tonight.
Are there any questions from the council? Now we have crickets. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number twenty-seven twenty-one.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number twenty-seven twenty-one has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-eight twenty-one.
Bill number twenty-eight twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Community Meetings.
And also, this same uh, bill was, uh, we heard it after midnight. So we uh, concluded the public hearing at the last meeting and the vote was held. And so here we are tonight. Mr. Volkey and Ms. Hare are co-sponsors. Mr. Volkey, you have a floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. This is a relatively straightforward bill. It provides that a community meeting be recorded in some form or fashion and that recording be provided to the Office of Planning and Zoning. Currently, the developer has to provide minutes from the meeting. This would just require that there be a recording. Uh, this is something that's become much easier over the last few months with COVID. Well, really here at this point, uh, as more of these meetings have moved online. So I believe that the, hopefully developers will have the ability to do this pretty easily. But I think it is important so that Office of Planning and Zoning can get a true flavor of how these meetings go and how the community feels about any proposed development. So I would ask my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Baron?
The administration, as we mentioned in the previous, oh, sorry, Pete Baron with the administration. Uh, I have uh, Mr. Kai Ziegler from OPZ, um, Ms. Blair Klaasmeyer and Mr. Swain from the Office of Law here. If there are any questions, uh, the administration, as we mentioned in the previous meeting, supports this bill.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number one.
Uh, Amendment number one. This amendment clarifies that a developer may, that a developer may record the proceedings of a community meeting by audio or audiovisual means.
And um, it's pretty clear. This is my amendment, my suggestion. We make clear uh, the type of recording and to um, especially clarify that a, an audio recording would be sufficient, that a visual recording is not mandatory. Um, so with that, I would move to adopt and ask for a second.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I don't necessarily have an issue with the, with the amendment, but I did wanna ask, um, Madam Legislative Council, Council, I think you had discussed this at, at the work session. Um, I think it was where we use the term recorded in other areas of the code and we don't specify and it can already mean audio or audiovisual. Am I misremembering that? But do we need this amendment essentially?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Linda Stewart, Legislative Council. Yes, I did say that the last time and I went back and looked at all the places in the code where recording of this nature is used. And it is really so messy that I think it's a good idea to have this amendment.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
That's my legal opinion. Messy.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number one.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill number twenty-eight twenty-one as amended will be heard on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one.
Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Twenty Twenty-One Amendments to the Anarando County Solid Waste Management Plan, twenty thirteen.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Uh, joining me from Office of Planning and Zoning is Mr. Kai Ziegler from Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. And from DPW, Mr. Bowen was trying to get on earlier. I don't know if they worked out the tack on it. Um, but he uh, might be available or might not and we'll do our best in his absence. Um, the Bill twenty-nine twenty-one uh, amends the County Solid Waste Management Plan. Uh, this uh, bill is required by state law to acknowledge the proposed private waste processing facility, veteran compost in Lothian. This facility has been issued a compost permit by MDE. The Lothian facility is planned to be sited on Sands Road in Lothian at, on the Sands Road Park property. Um, and you'll note in the legislative summary, there's a good description of uh, the state rules around uh, the solid waste management plan for counties. Uh, with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I have a couple of questions. This is uh, in District Seven. And I, I wanna first give a thank you to Planning and Zoning uh, for sending that detailed letter uh, in, in respect to the questions I had asked about community meetings uh, surrounding this facility before. Um, but first, I, I'd like to start out with, it's my understanding that that property um, had, used open space funds. And I received a question from a constituent about whether or not leasing that property uh, in the manner that it's been leased is a violation of the uh, open space funding. And I'm wondering if Office of Law might have an opinion on that.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Um, I don't think I know enough about the, the open space or the area that covers that, um, you know, with the program Open Space Funds. I'm happy to look into that. But I don't know whether there is any issue with that, um, without knowing about this ahead of time. I, I'm happy to look into that and, and get back to you on that.
Okay, thanks. Um, my, my next couple of questions, just because I'd like the public to, to know this piece that, that Planning and Zoning um, did respond. I had asked, I think it was at a work session, but my memory is now maybe a little bit fuzzy about when we were meeting. Um, whether or not there had been any public input into this facility um, at the time that it was proposed before, before this whole permit process or during this whole permit process. Um, and so I, I just wanna confirm here that there was a preliminary plan application submitted on June twelfth of two thousand nineteen. Um, a- a- and there was, right prior to that, there was an initial community meeting held on May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Is that correct?
Steve Kai Ziegler, that's correct.
Okay.
Planning and zoning officer, sorry.
Thank you. And uh, and then move- Thank you. And, and then moving on from that, it looks like following that, there was a second community meeting after the preliminary plan was approved. The, there was a second community meeting on March twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty. And then, following that community meeting, a site development plan application was made in June. Is that accurate? Is that consistent with your notes?
Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, that's also correct.
Okay. And then after, actually, I suppose there was also then after that site development plan application was made, there was a third community meeting held on September third of two thousand and twenty. And then the site development plan was approved on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. Is that consistent with your notes?
Sure. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, that's also consistent.
Okay. And I just want to make sure, given that it was two thousand and twenty, were those meetings, I mean, were people given the opportunity to appear virtually or in person or how was that handled? Because that was one thing I didn't see in your letter.
So Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, you have to really think in terms of COVID's impact on community meetings. It's likely the, the five thirty-two thousand and nineteen meeting was held in person and the three twenty-six twenty and nine three twenty community meetings were held in, in a virtual arrangement.
Ms. Hare, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just want to confirm.
Before you, I don't know how many more questions you have, but we do have one person who's going to give live testimony for a public hearing, so just please keep that in mind.
This will be my last question then. I just want to confirm, there were, there were people who attended. There were community members who attended at least the first two meetings. It looks like from your letter that there were, there was not anyone in attendance at the third meeting, but there was public participation at the first two.
Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, that's correct.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one submission that was shared with the whole council. It was added to the record and it has been posted to the county council website.
Thank you. We have one individual signed up to speak on Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one. You'll have two minutes to speak and please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Frederick Tuttman.
All right. Is that, I had to try several times to unmute. Forgive me.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Appreciate that. This is Frederick Tuttman. I am the Patuxent Riverkeeper, have been for the last eighteen years. I protect and work in collaboration with many communities up and down the Patuxent Corridor. To the extent there were public meetings on this matter earlier, I was not able to find any member of the community who was aware of them. In fact, for the most part, people became aware of this matter on Friday. And therefore, as the, I guess testimonial window closed at eleven AM this morning, very few people signed up. Several citizens have asked me to relay their concerns. We're obviously very disappointed in this application. We've been working with the county for close to three years to try and resolve issues of traffic, non-compliance, public health issues and various other issues in Lothian and Harwood. We've conducted a traffic study which documents that there are way too many trucks on this road. I realize that it seems rather benign to vote on a composting facility, but if you look at the cumulative impact of many different facilities in this area, you know, eventually you run out of space to put stuff and this is where we are with the general community. We also conducted in cooperation with the University of Maryland, a public health study in this area in two thousand and fifteen, which identified numerous public health hazards, all traceable back to additional, to industrial facilities in the community. Adding more facilities to this particular area that generate additional trucks is an environmental justice bonfire and it's deeply concerning because since we started three years ago, the county has done not a single thing to mitigate or alleviate any of these burdens. It has become virtually unlivable for citizens to, to function in their own community. Because of the perception, you can keep adding and approving permits in a place that is running out of space to put them and is having difficulty coping with the trucks. So moreover, this is a project that intends to lease space from the county in order to create additional truck traffic still. So the response of the county, essentially, without further disclosure of impacts or potential problems related to this facility, apparently, the county is prepared to approve it regardless of the impacts because the community is not aware of what's going on here. So we would encourage you to decline, to hear this matter tonight, or at least vote on it, to put it off until such time as citizens have an opportunity to get their questions answered. It is not irrelevant what those impacts are because the county knows that there's already an existing problem with industrial facilities here. Many of them.
Mr. Tuttman, your time has expired.
Thank you very much for your time and I encourage you to look deeply at the environmental justice implications here. Thank you.
The public hearing on Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one.
Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Two Thousand and One Amendments to the Anorindlo County Solid Waste Management Plan, twenty-thirteen.
Ms. Hare, do you want to, there is one technical amendment. Do you want to ask your question before we do that?
Uh, we can do the technical first, that's fine.
It's like clearing my decks on my script here, so. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects a typographical error.
Mr. Baron, do you have anything to say?
No, no, Madam Chair, Pete Baron. It's just a typo.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
And a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming, well, if there were discussions, speak up right now. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler? Ms. Radvian? Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, let's wrap up our discussion. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I, I just wanted to follow up on the public testimony we just heard. And I'm not making a motion at this point, but I'm curious if the administration would consider holding the bill for a short time just to take a look at this open space issue and the lease and, and try and get to the bottom of, of the concerns that we've just heard about. I, as I mentioned, I, I got an email, you know, about this just recently over the weekend and so I'm just trying to get to the bottom of some of this.
Pete Baron with the administration always think it's a good policy to make sure that we have all the questions answered and flush everything out. This bill will not expire, so if the council decided to hold, it would not be an issue.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I, I guess one of the questions that I have is I'm reviewing the legislative summary and I agree with Mr. Baron's statement. It's extremely detailed, which is helpful. But footnote four there indicates that effectively the council doesn't really have a say in this. I mean, the, at least the way that this legislative summary is written, it makes it sound like we have very little choice but to vote and approve this because if we don't approve it, it's really MDE who gets the authority to decide this. And if we said no, that we're not going to amend our solid waste management plan, then MDE can withhold water sewer solid waste permits for the county. They can issue written notice of inadequacy. We could go through an administrative appeal process. The private facility can sue us for injunctive relief. I mean, it's like, I never understand these pro forma things where we literally have no say, but we're forced to go on the record and vote on things that are, you know, not anything we have a say in. So I just want to clarify from the Office of Law. This is, we're in a position where we have very little actual movement or ability to do something different because this doesn't feel like we're in a position where we can say yes or no. It feels like we're sort of boxed into a position of having to say yes lest we wind up in, you know, significant hot water with MDE.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, a lot of what Mr. Volkey said is correct and I was looking back at my legislative summary as Mr. Tuttman was testifying to see whether I had addressed some of those issues. The, this bill is not a zoning bill. It doesn't give zoning approval of the facility nor does it give permitting approval of the facility, which is all within the purview and jurisdiction of MDE. This bill is really just a, almost like a ministerial act that happens at the end of the process when the applicant applies for the permit from MDE, applies for the zoning approval from the county. And then once it is going to go forward, it has to be in the solid waste management plan. So in other words, if the facility has zoning approval and if it, and permit issuance is imminent from the Department of, Maryland Department of the Environment, then the county is required by law to include it in the plan. It does not give any indication on behalf of the county whether you approve of the fills, facility per se, because that's not really what your jurisdiction is. That's really within the purview of MDE. But it does include it in the solid waste management plan, which is required to include all the solid waste facilities that are either proposed or are open and operating within the county. And then, as Mr. Volkey did indicate, if the county were to not include it in the plan, they could face some legal action from MDE to force us to do that, or we could face a claim from the private disposal facility, the, the private owner of the facility, seeking some kind of relief to compel the county to include them in the plan.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Kenny because that was very helpful. I appreciate that thorough explanation.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey?
I just have one last question or maybe clarifying comment. If the community wants to be heard on this in a forum where their advocacy could actually impact the outcome, as opposed to us being in this quote-unquote ministerial capacity where we can literally do nothing, is the proper place for them to advocate with MDE and to try to suggest to MDE that certain things should or should not happen? I mean, I'm just trying to clarify for them the path forward so that they know what they could do if they had concerns about any facility. Because it seems like lobbying us is not exactly the way to go.
Pete Baron with the administration. I'm not a hundred percent versed on how to do this. I mean, I, you know, there's definitely state officials. MDE, I would agree, is probably a, a good place to go, but there's also state elected officials.
Got it. Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Baron.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually wanted to respond to Mr. Volkey's question because I had a similar operation of a sand and gravel landfill rubble permit in my district. And I dealt with the Maryland Department of Environment and I do strongly suggest Secretary Grumbles has an email address. He has a phone number and office. You can look it up on Google. You also have state representatives that represent that area that would be good to reach out to. But in addition, the governor of the state of Maryland. Because who appoints cabinet members? The governor. So obviously, that office should be contacted and letting folks know their opinion. But I think ultimately here, we're laying out, when we talk about transparency and the facts, we don't have any oversight over this. I mean, it's frustrating for residents because they come to us and just like you and I, probably get emails about unemployment claims. I am powerless to help someone, but ultimately, at the end of the day, you got to go, who makes that decision? So I'd strongly recommend them writing emails and contacting Secretary Grumbles and, and letting them know their, their opinion and asking for a meeting also for MDE to come closer to the community. One of the problems that I had with one of the meetings that I had, they had a meeting that was, you know, fifteen miles away in Annapolis. And they argued that they didn't find a venue and I reminded them that we have local fire halls, other things. So that's the other piece too, that MDE should be considerate of the folks that are impacted and try and hold a meeting as close as possible. I know they can go to the bingo hall down there. There's local fire departments. We can make it work, but it's ultimately letting citizens be heard. Like I said, we don't agree, disagree, however it goes, but let people's voices be heard if they have concerns. So I just wanted to respond about, you know, a similar issue that I've had that, how people can, you know, respond. Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Okay, so it looks to me then like maybe there's a two-part process here because obviously MDE has to give the permit, but Planning and Zoning's letter on this also notes that this facility has ten conditional requirements in order to have their, you know, site development plan approved. And it looks to me like the community meetings were held as part of that process. So the notices that were given out then as part of that process, we could look into legislation for future issues where, for future facilities that maybe would require additional notice to community members if, if it sounds like they are not, you know, not all the community members are, are aware of what's going on. Mr. Kai Ziegler, do I, do I have that piece correctly, that there is this component that the county approves as part of the process, the site development plan?
Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, yes.
Okay, so this, this would be a piece where the county could look at this moving forward on, on the conditional uses and, you know, the community meetings that need to be held in advance and that would be one area as well where community members could voice their advocacy on these issues. I'd obviously can't change what has already happened, but it might assist in future issues.
Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, I'm not sure that was a question, but I, i- if it was, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Schuet, I see your hand.
I, I just want, I don't mean to throw cold water on any of this, but the MDE has already issued the permit for this facility. So whatever feedback would come from the community would be to be, I think, fairly overwhelming for them to revoke the permit. Just saying.
You always have a nugget of wisdom, Ms. Schuet. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one as amended.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
With no choice, aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Also feeling a little, I guess, hand-tied, aye.
Ms. Hare?
Also quite hand-tied. I would like to note to the, to the people who spoke publicly, I would very much like to continue this conversation about potential ways to offer more community input to this process for future projects, but understanding that in this instance, from a legal standpoint, we really are bound, aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number thirty twenty-one.
Bill number thirty twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Definitions Adult Independent Dwelling Unit.
Okay, this is my bill with Ms. Radvian as a co-sponsor. And to explain the bill, I'm actually, for the public's understanding, I'm going to read the legislative summary. It's short and succinct and says it best and if I add to it, I might screw it up. Okay. Existing law allows adult independent dwelling units as a permitted use in all residential zoning districts. This type of dwelling is defined as an independent dwelling unit where the occupied units are occupied by at least one person who is fifty-five years of age or older and resident minor children are prohibited. That's in the code, section eighteen-one-one-on-one. Existing law is silent with respect to whether an adult independent dwelling unit may be any type of dwelling unit such as a single-family dwelling or a townhouse or whether the adult independent dwelling unit must be of a type allowed in the applicable residential zoning district. Bill number thirty twenty-one would make it clear that an adult independent dwelling unit may be a dwelling unit of any type without reference to the underlying zoning. With that, Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Joining me is Mr. Kai Ziegler and Ms. Miller from Planning and Zoning and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. First, I want to state that the administration does have some concerns with this bill, but that doesn't mean we don't recognize the issue that the sponsors are seeking to address. We, we would like to work with them to fix the code. We were working on an amendment, but just flat out, and, and this is on us, could not get it done in time for the meeting this evening. That is, to also add, the sponsors might not have agreed with, with that approach and, and that would have been how we would have crossed that bridge if we got there, but we did not get to a place where we were able to have a, a meeting of the minds or, or even have something fully flushed out to have that meeting of the minds conversation. I'll, I'll lay out a couple of our sort of basic concerns and then I'm going to ask Ms. Miller to, to go into a little bit more detail. Basically, the way this bill approaches the issue is it would allow Is it would allow A I D U's to be a dwelling unit of any type without reference to the underlying zoning. Which goes against the spirit of the county's zoning laws. Um, by allowing age restriction, age restricted housing uh in any district. Um, be allowed to supersede the zoning classifications. There are. Very complicated things at play, so um. Before I screw it up, I'm gonna ask Ms. Miller to, to discuss in a little bit more detail. But unfortunately, as the bill stands now, the administration uh still has some pretty serious concerns. And uh would appreciate if, if we could continue work on it um to at least give it the old college try, as they say. So, Ms. Miller.
Hi, um Lynn Miller, P C. Uh, our concerns uh with the bill, I would say are, are of two types. Uh, there's sort of a. Policy perspective concern and then there's also a, a technical concern with the bill. Um, on the policy side, um, the, our, our issue is more with, is, is related. To, I would say compatibility with our land use plan and, and land use policies and. It's not related to the matter of a unit being age restricted, but it's related to the matter of what type of unit. And our concern is, is really um regarding the lower density residential districts, not. Really so much with commercial districts, uh but particularly, I would say, R one and R two districts. So those districts uh tend to equate on our land use plan with low density residential areas. And those areas are designated based on a number of criteria, which I know you all are very familiar with now. Because you just finished reviewing the, the new G D P. So, you know, part of those criterias relate to community character and compatibility. So the type of unit developed there does matter with respect to our land use and development policies. So, you know, oh, and as you also know, because you just finished reviewing the G D P. When we talk about those types of units, multi-family townhomes, we're generally trying to direct those to. The areas that are planned for higher density uses as well as our targeted growth areas in the new G D P. So our concern is, is. Relates to opening up particularly the R one and R two districts to. Straight townhome and multi-family types of uh housing units. And, you know, the, the bill is written because it only changes the definition. It doesn't link. That type of housing to any other sort of uh adult service or aging in place types of services. So in other words, it would strictly just allow a straight townhome development in an R two district. Um, with the only real requirement being that there would have to be at least one person of age fifty-five and over. So, so that's kind of the policy end of it and on the technical side. Um, related to that, you know, in our code now, the, the R one and R two districts. The bulk regulations there are crafted for, excuse me, for single-family types of dwelling units. Because those are the types of units that are allowed in those districts now. So the bulk regs aren't really applicable to. Townhome or multi-family types of units. And, you know, in other sections of the code, say in the R five, R ten, R fifteen districts. Those bulk regs for townhomes are found in the conditional use section. But uh because your bill would allow these, any types of units as permitted. There really would, would not be any bulk regulations that would apply there. So that's one of the things that uh, and, and amendment that we had crafted to potentially go with this would. Do would be to offer some bulk regulations that could apply um in those lower density residential districts where there are. There now would not be bulk regs that would be applicable to townhomes or multi-family. So that's a, that's a quick summary of sort of the two different um types of concerns that we had, that sort of policy related and. Technical related. I do think that we could, could come up with an amendment that would address um. The sponsors' goals. You know, we've had a few conversations with different members of the council about this and, and related topics. And I think we understand what you're trying to accomplish, but I think we. May be able to come up with something that would do that, but that would also maybe offer a better balance with our. Land use planning policies that were just adopted tonight.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just, I just had a question based on you. Um, Ms. Miller, you just mentioned that. This would allow essentially a townhouse development in R two. If, if I have a ten acre parcel in R one. Attached, attached or otherwise, I'm still only getting ten of these adult independent dwelling units. Where someone over the age of fifty-five must be living and no minor children are present, right? I mean, you're not suddenly gonna get, it doesn't give a density bonus that I can see or anything like that. You're still limited by the underlying, underlying. Zoning restrictions for density, right?
Yes, the way that the bill's written, it doesn't affect the density. I think the point I, that I was trying to make is that the. Compatibility and community character is based on more than just density. It's based on housing types and style and. Um, other factors.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, this is probably a question for Ms. Miller or someone else from Planning and Zoning. So my understanding is that prior to about eighteen months ago, this exact situation of allowing. Adult independent dwelling units in other zoning areas, uh you know, other zoning districts. Was okay. Um, and I'm going back to, there was a decision, I think it was in twenty sixteen, I want to say September. In front of the Administrative Hearing Officer, September twenty sixteen, where there was an application to allow an assisted living facility. In an R one and R two district. And there was also a component of that that had additional dwellings that were townhomes, not single family. That were gonna be part of that project. And in fact, the Administrative Hearing Officer granted the special exception to allow that at that time. Am I getting the history wrong here or is, is that what the policy of the county previously was, that this was okay? Because the way it's been presented to me is, we're effectively codifying what up until about eighteen months ago had been standard practice for this Office of Planning and Zoning.
Um Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. I'm not sure I can speak to that specifically without knowing the project. But it sounds like you're referring to a project that involved um an assisted living facility. So that would kick in the uh special exception requirements in Title eleven, which are different. From what we're talking about with this bill, which does not require an assisted living facility to be part of the development. This bill is strictly speaking to um adult independent dwelling units, which could be developed without an assisted living facility. And I also believe there was a bill passed, I believe in twenty sixteen, that amended that section of Title eleven. That relates to assisted living facilities and A I D U's. So that could explain. A change in, in direction on how these were evaluated. But again, I think I would need to know the specific project and go back and look at. Uh, the hearing officer's decision.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was the Villas at Severn Crest. And the administrative hearing case numbers were twenty sixteen dash zero one five seven dash R. Uh, and that was a zoning reclass and special exception was twenty sixteen dash zero one five eight dash S.
Okay, I can look into that for you and get back to you on it.
Are there any other questions at this time? Seeing none, um, we'll open the public hearing. On Bill number thirty, twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received three submissions of testimony through the online tool that were all seen, seen by the council. Uh, it's been added to the record and posted to our website.
Thank you. We have two individuals signed up to speak on Bill number thirty, twenty-one. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. First is David Katz.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Uh, and uh, balance the council, David Katz, nineteen thirty-one, Pendennis Drive. Um, Annapolis, Maryland. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening and I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. But uh, I, I, I support the bill. Um, I believe a, as a lot of you have stated and recognized, this is a clarifying bill. This doesn't change zoning, this doesn't increase density. This. Clarifies what I believe is consistent with a previous policy of the Office of Planning and Zoning is that how. Uh, adult independent dwelling units should be classified as their own dwelling unit type. Um, given uh, uh Councilman Volkey's questions, I was actually the attorney that handled the Severn Crest special exception. So I can speak specifically to it. And he is correct. That was an application that was supported by the county. Uh, and was granted by the administrative hea- administrative hearing officer where. Attached adult independent dwelling units were a part of a mixed use development that included. An assisted living facility and adult independent dwelling units. But attached products, uh, an attached product was on the plan. It was supported by the county and approved by the hearing officer. Uh, so again, I support uh this bill. I believe it uh simply clarifies what already exists in the code. I think it is consistent with the general development plan in that it, it will allow the market. Uh, to serve the growing need for a mixed use of product for our active, active adults in our aging community. Uh, so again, thank you for the opportunity to speak uh and um, and I appreciate uh the work on this bill.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll hear from Timothy Martin.
Good evening. Uh, Timothy Martin, two six six one, Weaver Road, building eight hundred, Annapolis, Maryland. I support Bill thirty, twenty-one. Uh, this bill clarifies that an adult independent dwelling unit is its own dwelling unit type. I assumed and applied in my day-to-day business operation that adult independent dwelling units were their own dwelling unit type. And could take on their own form, particularly based on the current definition and the permitted conditional and special exception use tables in Article eighteen. To clarify this in the code will help in providing a variety of products for persons fifty-five years of age and older. And provide consistency in the application of the definition. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill number thirty, twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number thirty, twenty-one.
Bill number thirty, twenty-one, an ordinance concerning zoning definitions, adult independent dwelling unit.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. It's a question for Planning and Zoning. With an adult independent dwelling unit, is there any requirement that there be a care component to it? Or is this simply age restricted? You have to be fifty-five and up?
Uh, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning, a- again, it is strictly age restricted. You have to have one resident who's fifty-five and up, and up. Um, the difference again i- is um, if you're talking about A I D U's in association with an assisted living facility. Then there is a different section of the code that applies because it's, it would be a special exception use in that case. But just a straight A I D U development by itself with no assisted living component. Um, would not have to meet those special or a, any conditional or special exception requirements because. It is listed in the use chart as its own use. Um, and so as the code is crafted now, it would just be a straight permitted use in all residential districts. With no conditional or special exception requirements. And um, just to give you one additional piece of information related to your earlier question, Mr. Volkey. I haven't had a chance to pull up the special exception case related to uh Villes at Severn Crest. But I did uh confirm that there was a bill in twenty sixteen that was passed. It was Bill twenty-one dash sixteen. That revised the special exception section in Title eleven. So prior to that bill, that section did include a clause that said independent dwelling units may be a combination of various dwelling types. And that's the language that was removed by that bill. So we, we based on that and the, you know, that that was a piece of legislation that was passed. We have to assume that at, at that time, uh, the council's intention was not to uh allow A I D U's to be any dwelling type. So just wanted to clarify that. I think that may be the reason for some of the confusion about how our office has. Been interpreting these, this over the years. And I think some of it relates to code changes.
Ms. Radvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District Six. Um, what was the, that you just mentioned, um, that a previous legislation that passed? What year was that passed?
Uh, well, the bill number was twenty-one sixteen, so I'm gonna send it passed in either twenty sixteen or seventeen.
Thank you. That's.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, as a sponsor, I will offer a comment, um, which is. Um, obviously, we, we don't have an amendment proposed before us this evening. Um, and I, my feeling is that an amendment, at least of the type that the draft that was shared with me, would be. Appropriate for its own bill. Um, and that we're talking about. This bill is being extremely limited in scope. We rarely get such limited bills. This is clarifying existing. Code language to be, doesn't make any other changes. It simply reverses an administrative interpretation that's been different over the past eighteen months or so. Than it had been in the past and um, and does so without saying that there's necessarily. Um, any issue with the administrative interpretation, but clarifies that. That an A I D U is what it is and that the law means what it means. Meaning it is a dwelling unit of any type without reference to the underlying zoning. And that's important as a, as a tool for our aging population, being able to serve their needs. Um, we need to allow some creativity, some flexibility. We need to allow the market to be able to help determine what. Dwelling types are going to appeal. Um, and as Mr. Volkey brought up on our discussion about. Uh, Bill eleven, twenty-one. We've got people coming in. That also means there's, there are going to be people moving around in our county. People who are moving out of their existing homes that may be good for a young family, but an older person wants to move out into a different living situation. So this bill is just simply to preserve that tool as a flexibility. It doesn't change. Anything else or no development bonuses associated with it. And there's no changes to any of our adequate public facilities concerns. There will still be other considerations that are going to be applied to any kind of A I D U development. Um, which I think just means that's great. That means that the folks who can build things. For our population, like homes, can help figure that out. Um, and that's consistent with what we do for other dwelling types as well. Regardless of their zoning district or zoning designation. So uh with that, I would ask for your support on this bill and to, you know, look forward to whatever the administration. Would like to bring forth, forward as far as a more comprehensive reform. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, I appreciate what you said. I, I think that's all very helpful information. I did have one question about something that came up. The idea that there's no density bonus or sort of like no addition for A I D U's. I don't understand that. That wouldn't make any sense. So. I mean, if we're saying that, then that means you can build one adult independent dwelling unit on one acre in R one. So there has to be some kind of density bonus. It's not listed here in the bill, but what am I missing that's in the code? I mean, otherwise, you're, you're telling me that we're simply saying you can build one townhouse looking structure on R one? Like, it just doesn't make any sense.
Ms. Pickard, um. If you want, oh, did you want to respond to that comment?
Well, Ms. Miller, I think had something to say.
Go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Well, I, I was gonna try to respond to Mr. Volkey's comment. Um, he's correct that. Um, again, uh Councilman Lacy's bill is simply changing the definition. It is not changing. Any of the bulk requirements, including density. So, no, it's not likely that someone would build one townhome unit. I don't think that would even qualify as a townhome if it were only one unit. You need to have at least three in a row. But again, part of our concern is that there will be, setting aside density, there will be no bulk regs in the code that would apply to a townhome development in an R one or R two district. Um they're not there. The bulk regs that are there now are are crafted for single family dwellings.
Mister Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, but so the underlying zoning still stays in place. I mean, that's kind of your bulk reg, right? You're not gonna get more density than what the underlying zoning allows because this bill doesn't change it. So if you have fifty acres and you wanted to put fifty townhomes on one acre and leave the other forty nine undeveloped, and you want to call it an adult independent dwelling unit, I mean, that seems like that's the max density you're getting on that property. Am I am I like missing something here?
I I'm not sure. I don't think you are, Mister Volkey. I'm sorry, Lynn Miller, planning and zoning. But again, the bulk regs go beyond density. So for example, townhome developments. Um if you're doing townhomes in an R five or R ten district, there are conditional use and the bulk regs are found in Title ten. And so they relate to how many, how many units can be contained in one townhome structure and how close two or more townhome structures on a lot can be together and those types of requirements. So um I'm I'm just trying to make the point that there there would be no such requirements if you were doing a townhome development in R one or R two. The only requirement you would have to meet would be the the age fifty five and older one resident.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D two. Well, and you'd have to adhere to the density. So the the confusion comes in when you you tackle AIDUs in conjunction with assisted living, which assisted living, you know, as we know, can be in R one and R two. It can be multifamily. You can have a large two hundred unit multifamily uh assisted living facility in R one and R two. Um you know, uh Mister Volkey and I are introduced a bill tonight that that tackles some assisted living. Um the the code and assisted living. And and again, it's it's another small step towards meeting some of the goals set forth in Plan twenty forty, which is to ensure that we have a variety of housing types and designs for our aging population. And they're both sort of small steps getting towards um what what we know we need to do, which is a comprehensive update to our code to make sure we're modernizing the code uh in response to both the market and our aging community. I look forward to that work. I I mentioned some of the implementation work that I'm uh interested in doing. These um Bill thirty twenty one and then uh I don't even know the number of our bill, Mister Volkey, forty nine twenty one. But um whatever the number was put on it, you know, get at the same issue. Um they just do it in sort of baby steps. So um I I think we can get there comprehensively, but it is gonna take a a good bit of work to address some of the concerns of the administration. And I I'd I'd like to proceed that way if if my colleagues in the administration is um is amenable to get together a really solid work group of stakeholders to make sure that as we update the current code and modernize it to address the housing issues of our seniors, both active through assisted living and beyond, um that we do so um with creativity and innovation in mind. Thanks, that's all I'd say.
Ms. Rodvian.
Um thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. I wanted to um clarify, um regardless of the particular housing type, any um anything that were built would still have to meet um adequate public facilities tests. And obviously, school capacity is not gonna be an issue in a fifty five plus community. But all the other pieces of um APF would still come into play and would um, you know, act as a- at least some sort of uh, you know, sort of natural limitation on, you know, um what exactly could be built. Is is that correct?
Um Lynn Miller, OPC, yes, that's correct.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing no flags. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number thirty twenty one.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mister Volkey.
Aye.
Mister Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number thirty twenty one is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution number twenty five twenty one.
Resolution number twenty five twenty one. Resolution approving the selection of SB and Company LLC, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year twenty twenty one.
Thank you. And Ms. Bowler, Madam Auditor, could you um speak to this resolution?
Sure, thank you. Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. Um we requested proposals from qualified certified public accounting firms licensed in the state of Maryland to perform the financial audit of the fiscal year twenty twenty one Anorongo County annual financial report to also perform a single audit on the fiscal year twenty twenty one schedule of expenditures of federal awards and to potentially perform other services as requested. These other services include the bond comfort letter. Based on recommendations from our evaluation committee, SB and Company was selected as the independent CPA firm. SB and Company is a Maryland headquartered minority business enterprise. They are a certified public accounting and business advisory firm primarily serving the mid-Atlantic region. They have performed audits such as the state of Maryland's financial statement audit and the District of Columbia's financial statement audi- audit with a reputation of delivering documents on time, providing accurate advice on technical issues and assisting with adopting new accounting standards. So we are requesting your approval of our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Your connection went out a little bit, but I think we got um ev- nearly everything you said. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number twenty five twenty one.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mister Volkey.
Aye.
Mister Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler. Ms. Rodvian. Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number twenty five twenty one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution number twenty six twenty one.
Resolution number twenty six twenty one. Resolution celebrating Older Americans Month in Anorongo County.
Now, Ms. Rockin and Ms. Pickard are the lead sponsors, and they are gonna have to duke it out with Mister Volkey and Mister Pruski as co-sponsors. Actually, Ms. Rodvian, you go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. Um I I really like this because my parents fall into this category, as I'm sure lots of parents um of our, my council, my council colleagues um and other folks. And hey, maybe some of us fall into this category, but um I just, you know, we we have so much to celebrate are about our older um Americans, including um you know, folks that are still working full time in their careers and serving as leaders because they've developed the experience in their fields. Um we have folks that are retired, that are volunteering in special ways, engaging in lifelong learning, um spending time tutoring kids, um you know, lots of contributions. In fact, um very frequently, um the folks that are scrutinizing our work on the county council are older Americans. Um folks that are retired that really have maybe a little bit more time to um to really take a close look and follow what our local legislator legislators are doing. Um so I think there's so many reasons to celebrate, and I'm sure my colleagues will add more, but um when I saw this as a possible um opportunity to honor uh great folks, and especially considering um the last year, um you know, it's it's definitely been hard in lots of different ways, um the pandemic for lots of different people, but older Americans, um you know, obviously at greatest risk of illness, um had to, you know, have had to sacrifice time with their families in order to get through. Um and so uh definitely want to honor the sacrifices that they've made, the contributions that they continue to make, um their lifelong experience, which we all benefit from. Um I had I attended a birthday party, well, a birthday party, a a car caravan birthday party of a one hundred year old um resident of my uh district yesterday. And, you know, from serving in World War Two to being a public school teacher, serving in the DC police force. Um I I can't even imagine how much information and knowledge is in in that one person's brain. So uh we've got, you know, a a huge mind trust of um of of great people in our community that we should um embrace and cherish.
But not too closely unless we've been vaccinated. Mister Pruski.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Rodvian said. Um you can check each of our Facebook pages about things. I know Mister Volkey represented the uh uh the Colonel or General that was in your area at a birthday party. There's been several other people that have gone. I've gone to a small business owner, eighty-five years old, gentleman's own for thirty years. I mean, there's a lot of examples of folks, and it is a difficult time, especially for for our seniors. And I'm hoping we get a seven oh vote on this bipartisanship. Uh there shouldn't be any issue. If there there's a problem here, we have to talk uh about if there's a no vote here. I I we'll have a private meeting. So hopefully, uh this goes the way that I think it's gonna go. Thank you.
Ms. Schewett.
As an older American, I want to thank the council for this resolution. I feel very honored. Thank you.
Mister Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very pleased to co-sponsor this resolution with you all. Um and as Mister Pruski noted, I did get the opportunity to attend the ninety-third birthday for a two-star general in my district, uh General McGruder. So that was a really, really great thing, and I thank my colleagues for joining on that citation, which I presented to him. I know he appreciated it. So thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District Two. And um it is May, does kick off Older Americans Month. And I I think this is a fantastic statement from the council. I want to read a couple of the whereas clauses. Um uh whereas, older older adults have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes, failures, joys, and difficulties, and their stories and contributions help to support and inspire others. And it sort of ends with, whereas the county council recognizes the important role older residents serve in keeping communities con- connected and strong, and now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of Anorongo County, Maryland, that it hereby celebrates the countless contributions of older adults that older adults make to strengthen our communities every day and recognizes the month of May as Older Americans Month in Anorongo County. Um so, older adults have have shaped my life. I was very, very fortunate to have um very involved grandparents and um I'm I I have a a an admiration for my own parents. Uh my dad served two tours in Vietnam and my mom um uh was a was a nurse up until, as she retired a few years ago. They are now in their early eighties and have shown me what it means to love unconditionally. I also um worked profession, my professional career with older adults, both in housing um from low income to um uh for profit to in the nonprofit sector, serving older adults, um which I was inspired through my term of service in AmeriCorps, where I got to work with older adults in rural uh La Grange, Georgia. Um it set a path for me. And so you'll see some of my legislation from this term and going forward. Um also serves to honor our older adults and make sure that Anorongo County is a place where they can thrive and have a quality of life. Um so this is a really special month, and I know our fantastic Department of Aging is going to be celebrating it in many, many ways. And I hope to be able to um participate in some of those events. Um I know when I um, I don't know about everybody else, but the one department I think gets absolutely no complaints is the Department of Aging in Anorongo County. They are known to be top-notch uh um government agency serving, and they have really served har- uh well our older citizens through this trying time of COVID. Um so I want to also thank those folks that are working hard and tirelessly every day, serving our our older generation. Um so thank you for my colleagues uh for giving me the indulgence to speak a little bit much on this one. So, thank you, everybody.
You're reminiscing like an old lady.
Yeah, it is. There is a, there is a joke in my family that, you know, put me between two seventy-five, eighty-five year olds, and I'm 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 happy because I I really enjoy this population and I'm slowly but surely getting very close uh as I am pushing fifty myself, as the oldest member of the council. Um I'm I'm feeling uh quite uh part of the, part of the team here.
Chair's indulgence. Um is there any other comment anybody would like to offer? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number twenty six twenty one.
I'll do that, Madam Chair. However, I'm not going to reveal my age.
Not required. I it might be illegal. Don't, don't worry.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mister Volkey.
Aye.
Mister Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number twenty six twenty one is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until tomorrow, Tuesday, May fourth, at one PM, when we will come together for budget presentations. See you there. Have a good night.